Good evening, everybody. Sorry, we're running just a little bit late this evening, but welcome to the Evanston Township High School Board of Education meeting, February 11th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right, so the first thing on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Davis?
We have no written communication at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're right at information already. Number five item is international travel.
Yep, and I'm going to introduce Robbie Brown, who has come to you with this before. While Robbie's getting seated, I want to mention, we normally are broadcasting live on cable, but it may be scrambled and not working properly tonight. Now, I know anybody tuning into that won't hear this announcement, but if you're streaming and you hear from somebody who says, "I can't find it," they can go to our website and to our YouTube icon and find us streaming. So, I guess that's the best I can do to get the word out.
That is good. Thank you. All right.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to come before you, like I do at this time every school year, to come present the international travel trips for the 2019-2020 school year. So, these would all be trips that take place from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. In the memo that I presented in the board packet, you saw the five trips that are proposed for the 1920 school year. They're all pretty familiar trips to us in terms of the places that we're going with world languages, traveling on a Japan exchange, the Global Visionaries Guatemala, and the Germany Exchange, our ETHS Travel Club, that's one of our student activities, one of our student clubs proposing a trip to Puerto Rico, and our annual fine arts trip to the Stratford, Ontario, Canada for the Theater Festival there. So, like I said, these are all very experienced chaperones and very experienced at planning and executing the trips. And as always, I just want to reinforce once again that, you know, ETHS and the trip sponsors and the trips, the supervisors of the chaperones are always committed to making sure any student that qualifies and wishes to attend any of the trips can make that possible through fundraising and through scholarships and through donations, so that, like I said, anybody that does qualify and wishes to go can afford the trips and make it happen. I would just like to say, this is my sixth year now doing the, here at ETHS, fifth year doing field trips and making this presentation, and I've never had a student or family or anybody come to me and say, like, "You know, I really wanted to go on the Japan trip, but we just couldn't make it work financially." So, we're really dedicated through all those various sources that I just mentioned to making it happen. So, I'm here if you have any questions this evening about the individual trips. I'm more than happy to do my best to try and answer your questions. Thank you.
I have a question.
All right, Pat.
Thanks, Robbie, and I do, I was reading to your report and feeling like you really are doing, there's a holistic approach to making sure that everybody gets to go who wants to. I guess I would love to hear, and you have told us in the past, but it's good to refresh, it's been a year, how, what are some of the ways that students find out about these trips? Because if it's one, I mean, I think sometimes it's, you're in that class, and that class is going, and that sort of seems, but are there, are there ways that this, the information gets out? I guess I'm wondering if there are students who aren't asking because they assume they can't do it. Do you know what I mean?
Well, with a variety, with most of the trips, it is class-based, so the teachers are advertising it in the classes to the level of students that are eligible to go.
Right.
The one that's a student club, the Travel Club, of course, those sponsors are advertising it to their members. The one that's kind of more wide open is the Global Visionaries trip, and I know that the World Languages Department hosts an event in our auditorium, and the Spanish classes go to that for one period, and they do a presentation about that to all the Spanish classes at the school during the day. So, that, but it's mostly advertised through the teachers advertising directly to the students that are eligible to go, or the staff. Right.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I think over the years, you've been very aware of the dates, and you've been trying to be respectful and respond to our concern that students don't miss school, so we appreciate that. I think there was one date in February, but that's over a long weekend, is that correct?
Yeah, that, the Japan trip typically encompasses the President's Day weekend.
Right.
And that one, we're really tied to, because it is an exchange, to when the sister school in Japan can host us and when they're in school.
Sure, sure. And then all the other dates. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate your time this evening. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, so Dr. Davis is standing, so that must mean we're at item number six, Report on Advanced Placement.
And you'll see the team coming up, of course, Pete Davis, we have Dale Leibforth and Tina Lula and Josh Brown. Tina and Josh are like the co-leaders of Team ASAP and just our work period with our AP classes, and Dale has been actively involved in helping lead the effort for a long time, like a long, long time. Pete, I tried to stall with those introductions, but I'm trying to think if I should sing a song or something now.
I like to be live on cable, not on, all right. Very good.
So, if this meeting goes long, we know why, right?
It certainly won't be your fault.
It won't be your fault.
Okay, here we go. Advanced Placement. Independent National Recognition, you've seen this slide before, but this is just a reminder that our Advanced Placement work has been, you know, honored and validated in a variety of different sources. National School Board Association, Washington Post, Educational Leadership, the College Board itself, PBS NewsHour, MSAN, Phi Delta Kappa, and just to name a few. Just a quick reminder for those keeping score at home, there's a five-point scale that AP scores are scored at, and three qualifies for college credit. Again, it's recommended that you check with the college in which you've applied and received acceptance to, to see what their actual policies are. Interestingly, all public universities and community colleges in Illinois are required to award college course credit for AP scores of three or higher. And what that means is that you score a three in AB Calculus, and on your transcript from U of I, it doesn't say AB Calculus, it actually has a course code attached to it for the actual course at U of I. If you do very well on AP exams, this can translate into significant savings. You could enter with sophomore standing on the front end. Very nice. And that's a law. For the fifth consecutive year, ETHS had more scores of three or higher on AP exams than we had total exams in 2010. This is one way to just say thank you to all of the folks who administer the exams and who quarterback that effort, including Carrie Levy and her team. To put it in context, 1,546 AP test scores of three or higher in 2018 compared to 1,384 AP tests administered in all of 2010. More students doing better. That's a 77% increase in scores of three or higher. Nationally, 20% of high school graduates earned a three or higher on at least one AP exam. That's from the AP Report to the Nation 2014. And just to put that into perspective, 52% of all seniors. You take the senior class, and more than half of them last year earned a three or higher in at least one AP exam. Half the kids have walked across the stage. Access is up 123% since 2006-7. Scores of three or higher are up, each subgroup has made gains, but access and success gaps persist. Always include this every year. You see the 77% increase in scores of three or higher. Interestingly, during that same time, we've seen a 50% increase in the scores of four or higher. My friends always say, like, you know, "It's great that the kids are getting threes, but how many, how are we doing in fours or higher?" Because that's really a marker of distinction. 50% increase, 945 scores of four or higher last year. This is the larger statistic where you take all of the juniors and seniors that are enrolled at ETHS, and you put that in the denominator, and then in the numerator, you put the students who took an AP course, and you'll see that that's what that graph is. That's a graph we keep track of because we want to look at that percentage, because that percentage tells us, that's where the bulk of kids take AP exams, our freshmen and sophomores don't take AP exams, so that you're really, it opens up junior and senior year. It's when students typically have their first exposure to Advanced Placement, and that's why we track that. Here are the scores of three or higher. Again, out of all of the juniors and seniors enrolled at ETHS, not the ones that are just taking AP classes, this is out of every kid, who's a junior and senior, 42% earned a three or higher on one or more AP exam. This is, this shows up later in the next report, but I did find this old statistic, which is AP participation divided by total school enrollment. Almost a third of our students overall take an AP exam. That's out of all of the freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors enrolled. So, that actually accounts, that's a little misleading to a certain extent, because we've seen in the last two years an increase in freshman, you know, the freshman and sophomore classes are very large, and they really can't take AP classes, but still, look at that chart, it's pretty impressive. High access and success, those are your total AP students. How are they doing? 74% of the students who took an AP exam earned a three or higher. Here you see 49% of the African-American students who took an AP test earned a three or higher. 65 out of 132 students. 90 out of 134 Hispanic-Latino students, or 67% of the students. White students, 80% of the students, white students who took an AP test scored a three or higher. So, 10 courses are our leaders in terms of enrollment, and they also are leaders in terms of success numbers. So, our access and success numbers are essentially the same courses year in and year out. You see, that 324 students took English Language and Composition, 270 took AB Calculus, 256 took Psych, 237 took US History, and on and on. Those are very large numbers of exams and of enrollment in specific courses. Those 10 courses, oddly enough, make up 76% of our scores of three or higher. This is where you see the greatest amount of access and the potential to grow success, particularly when you're looking at things like AB Calculus, Psychology, US History, those courses. The College Board keeps track of this, this is our record of distinction. College Board awards to graduating, to students, I'm sorry, not just graduates, but they have this thing called Scholars. You'll see that last year, we had 380 Scholars. We keep track of this number, but I'm very, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this number, because this number really, the College Board acknowledges students who take multiple AP classes and do well, and we're really about students, where obviously, that's great, that's wonderful, but when you see things that say, like, National AP Scholar, you're talking about kids who take a significant number of AP courses, and that may not be the best choice for well-being and balance. So, that number is there, it's an important number to look at, it's an external, you know, honor that's bestowed on our students individually, they get something from the College Board that tells them that, but I don't want to really spend an inordinate amount of time on that. We follow a three-step planning process, you know, we determine focus areas, we analyze data, and then we do intervention. We worked with Dale's team in AB Calc last year, we did what's called a micro-intervention. We had students write about their stressors right before they took the AB Calc test, and our AB Calc scores went up. It was actually an intervention that was studied by Stanford. Stanford created the intervention, came and administered that writing prompt before the test, and wrote it up and published it in an article that came out about a month and a half ago. I'll send that article around if you're interested. It's about micro-interventions, small things you can do that can have a profound impact, particularly on students of color, is really what they're looking at and what they found nationally, and they found it held true here at ETHS, similar to a study they did in freshman bio a couple of years ago on the semester exams for freshman bio. National need, this is just how the, nationally, how the amount of opportunity filters as you go through school. You know, this is out of 100 entering kindergartners, 11 score three or higher in at least one AP exam by the time they, this is like longitudinal data that the College Board collected. So, this really says that our efforts not only need to be about awareness here at ETHS around advanced placement programs, but awareness in the middle school and elementary school level, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And turn it over to Dale here, he can tell you all about our great AP supports, and his team will walk you through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Pete. So, you've seen this slide before, we aren't going to highlight each one of the supports, but the idea here is that we don't expect students to be an AP student, if you will, on day one. We want to prepare them the year before, so you see the first, you know, row is all about what happens the year before their AP year, and then continues to happen throughout the year along the bottom. So, you look at the pre-AP year, how do we create awareness for our AP program? How do you make sure that students are ready? How do you ensure that they have access to all the courses? And then how can you ensure that they're successful? So, these events are really, you know, built around those pillars of making students aware, making sure that they're ready, how do we, you know, get rid of any barriers to access that are out there, and then how do we help ensure success for the students? So, we've built a series of events, really created by our Team ASAP students for the students. We are going to highlight some aspects of this, and we can come back to that if there's specific questions. But again, the idea is, we, the whole year before and the year during your AP course, we're helping to prepare you for success. We talked about some of the metrics at the end, like the AP exam, but how can we start, really, a year before you ever get into that class to help make sure that you're prepared for the class? So, we'll talk a little bit about the team. Team ASAP again is Team Access and Success in Advanced Placement, and it also stands for Team ASAP, right? Let's do it as soon as possible. And so, we've tried to make some changes this year that we'd like to highlight.
So, one of the areas that we have made a lot of strides in this year with Team ASAP has been our Advisory Board Captains, who we call our ABCs. Those are our student leaders. This year, we have about 20 Advisory Board Captains who have been really committed over the course of the year, so we meet with them twice a month, and this year, they've taken on a lot more leadership opportunities than they have in the past. So, they run all of our lunch meetings. Team ASAP holds a lunch meeting once a month, which is open to all students, and it's run during lunch periods, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and all of those meetings are run by two of our Advisory Board Captains. So, they work with Josh and I to prepare in how they'll present that information, how they're going to run the meeting. We often do role-playing, and this year, we've really made a stronger focus on conversations and facilitating conversations around race and equity in Advanced Placement. So, they've been doing a lot of that. In addition, we've done some team-building work, so we did a community service event together, and then they've also been a crucial part of the panel at the AP Forum, and then upcoming middle school visits that we're going to have, they'll serve on the panels there. And lastly, it's really them who are driving the topics that are being covered at our meetings, as well as any changes. Dale just showed the graphic with all the different events. Our ABCs really have an active voice in talking about those events and giving us suggestions for how they can be improved to access more students and be more useful to students. So, to talk about at least one example of that, I'll pass it over to Josh.
So, I'm going to talk about the AP Fair. That was an event that had previously been held right out in the common area in the main hallway during lunch periods, which was sort of something students could choose to come to during their lunch period. We decided to reorganize it and have it held in the hub, and what we did was had students come in groups with their teachers. There were also drop-ins, but students came along with teachers that signed up to bring their whole class to learn about AP. This got to where we had more than 400 students through the course of the day. We did something all nine periods. We oriented it with like a short presentation about AP, emphasized access, emphasized that students could take AP classes that were interested in subject areas, and also to coordinate it with their future plans, career and college plans. And then I thought the really cool part of it was after we had a little kind of grown-up oriented talk, we then moved on to, they had a panel of students representing each of the different departments, a lot of whom were students from the Advisory Board Captains, and all the students that had come down to this fair could walk around to different desks and talk to different students who were either currently taking AP classes or previously had, and so they could really come to see how they themselves could enter into those classes as they wanted to, as opposed to just if they had happened to come to the thing in the hallway before, now they were with their teachers, and there was a supportive environment for them to learn more about something they might have not learned about in the past. So, it was, it was a really fun event. Did that back in December.
So, we always are looking to kind of grow and change our events, and the students, you know, we said, "What should we do? You know, how can we make it better?" We thought the hub was a more centralized location, so that was a great move this year. And a lot of the positives that come out of an event like that are those one-on-one conversations. So, we try to make those connections with students. Often, a teacher will ask, you know, "Why did you take this class?" Well, you came into a class that I was in and told me that, you know, I was the student that you wanted in your class, or I saw you at an event, or, you know, maybe we came to see you at one of our visits, you know? So, we've, we've been reaching out to District 65, how can we let them know as early as possible, make that connection as early as possible? We have presented at an Institute Day at CHU, and we've gone to Lincolnwood Elementary School. It's never too early, is one of our phrases, right? We went to Nichols last year in the spring, that was a great event. We were able to present, you can see some pictures of the event there, but we were able to present their entire eighth-grade class, there's Principal Harry, isn't he taking a selfie, classmates from back in the day? And once we presented to all them, we broke out, and what we had is one or two of our Team ASAP students with a class of students, and really talk about the transition from eighth grade into high school, and before they ever even get to the school, talk about, you know, "What do you want to be when you grow up? You know, what's your pathway? What are you interested in? What are you passionate about? And how can we connect that to academics?" You know, one of the pathways that we're talking about today is AP, but how can we help you transition into the high school? We go to access ETHS classes and have presentations there, and often, you know, when you talk to any of the Team ASAP kids or the AP students, you know, "Where did you get that first connection?" It's at one of these events. They met a student, they met a teacher, they met someone, they saw someone that looked like them, and they are welcomed into not only ETHS, but our AP program, and you've seen some of the results of that, that Pete highlighted earlier. So, again, we want to get to the students as early as we can to create that awareness, to let them know about the pathway here, and to get the messaging out as well, that, you know, we want every student to take one AP class in an area that they're passionate about, but there is a balance, you know? On the other end, sometimes, you know, you're taking too many AP classes, and how can we make good decisions for the well-being of our students and for their academic success?
And I would just like to highlight why this is important, so you're going to have to indulge me as I work the clicker. You'll notice that in the graph of 11th and 12th graders, we saw a, our access numbers were a little down, and that's really, you know, one of the strategies we came up with when we saw that, was that we went and created the fair in the hub so that we could have a guaranteed audience of students. It wasn't, we could no longer be passive about, you know, seeing kids in the hall coming over, so we actually were very intentional about that. And it's also why we're intentional about going to elementary and middle schools, because we want to see continued success. Some of that drop-off may be the result of students making well-being choices, we don't know, but whenever I see a drop-off of a few percentage points, I always look toward increasing the access message, so that students know what the decisions are that they're making, and they make informed decisions. And with that, we're open for Q and A.
I have one, I'm glad you put that chart up, because that was my first one.
Gretchen, turn your mic off.
Oh, sorry, sorry, there it is. This is just sort of a clarification question, I have another, maybe slightly more substantive question. This chart is the percent of grade 11, 12 students taking one or more exams, and then in the report immediately following, and I think you probably have it in the slideshow, is the percent of grade 11 or 12 students earned a three or higher on one or more exam. I'm just trying to clarify for my own sake, in the second chart, well, in the first chart, it's a 57% of grade 11 or 12 students took one or more exam in 17-18. In the second chart, 44% of grade 11 or 12 students earned a three or more, three or higher on one or more exams. Is that 44%?
Forty-two. Forty-two. You're talking about the blue line, I got, I know where.
No, 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 40, it's 40, well, I don't know, the heading says 44, the line says 42, okay, so that's one issue, but.
Well, it's correct up there. It's up there.
On the, in the report, it says 44, so, sorry, I was just going off the heading because it's too tiny down low. So, my question is, in the second chart, is the 44% just 44% of the students who took the AP exam, or is it 44% of all students? This is not clear.
It's of all students. It's of all of the junior and senior class, as the denominator.
Perfect. We should probably clarify that, because there's something about the way it follows that made me second-guess it. I mean, I was hoping that that was the answer, but it, just to make it crystal clear. So, I have another, do you want me to go, or does somebody else want to take a turn? Now, if we could scroll back and, sorry, scrolling, scrolling. F. Somewhere in here. It's the chart that breaks it out by subgroups.
Ah, gotcha.
Here we go. It's back on page 11 of the report. No, sorry.
Try 10.
Try 10, yeah, go back further.
Nine and 10, right?
Yeah, nine and 10, okay. So, student access and success is the heading, and then, then we go down, and there's black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, and so on. I just want to clarify here, because again, this is, as I was looking more, you've done a similar report for many years now, and it's very helpful to sort of repeat that format, to see the trends over time and all of that, and I very much appreciate it, taking that format. But as I was sort of staring at this more closely, I was, I was trying to grapple with some of the numbers. Under black-African-American section, you show us data from 2011-12 to 17-18, as you do for all the other subgroups as well. And so, I'm not singling out black-African-American for any particular reason, other than we are focusing on black males in particular. When you say total AP students in 2011-12 who are black-African-American, we have 99, and then we have 34 of those students with a three or higher. So, the 34% is 34 out of the 99.
Correct.
Which is terrific and very nice. What I think this doesn't, I don't think this tells the whole story, which is that we actually, in that year, have 892 black students, if I'm reading the start-of-school report data correctly from the report that follows in our packet. So, out of our 892 students in 2011-12, we still only have 99. we still only have ninety-nine of our black students taking AP exams and thirty-four scoring three or above, which takes that percent of AP students who are black scoring three or above really a lot lower than the thirty-four percent.
That's if you use the denominator as the total enrollment, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
You know, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't look as great then.
Well, nothing, well, yes, and none of it will look, it'll, the BACS is thirty-three percent as a school, right? If you do that, your enrollment divided by, so that's a statistic. We never disaggregated that statistic before. What we used to do is we did total enrollment. And then in the numerator, before we started this work, we would do number of students, right? So it's AP students divided by total enrollment. We decided for the two charts to track what you're talking about, we decided to track the juniors, right? So we backed that up, we tracked the juniors and seniors because that's where they take the exams, right? So you'll see that right there, twenty-nine percent of black students took an AP exam, right? And then you'll see that fourteen percent of juniors and seniors who are black, African-American got a three or higher. That's that's there. And then what we added to that for context was, we said, we had ninety-nine students in two thousand and eleven, twelve. We have a hundred and thirty-two, because we were measuring this in individual students when we started the work, because it said each student counts, we want each student to count. So then we went from thirty-four students with a three or higher to sixty-five individual students scoring a three or higher. Many of those students scored three or higher on more than one exam. But we chose to look at individual students with that purpose. Now, what I would like to see, and the reason we're doing the work, is we want to see that one-thirty-two continue to increase, right? We want that to go up, so that this number back here, right? Will go up, that's the goal. That's game, set, match, so it's good to point that out. The reason we don't report it with freshmen and sophomores is because they don't take AP exams.
Yeah, well, and you could, if I had the numbers in front of me, you would subtract out of the nine-hundred or eight-hundred-and-ninety-two, I'm just using eleven, twelve as an example, you would cut it
Yeah, it would be about.
Probably not quite in half because
Yeah, it's about twenty-three percent when you're when you look at it.
You would cut it more in half because our ninth, tenth grade enrollments are larger than our junior and senior enrollments. So it's not even half of that number.
And if you go back to oh-six, oh-seven, it was seven percent of the eleventh and twelfth graders taking an AP exam for that subgroup.
Right.
And five percent earning a three or higher. So yeah, there's there's ways to track it. I think tracking it with juniors and seniors in that, in this passion is the way to do it.
Totally fine with that.
And I think to add, but we always want to be mindful, and the reason this is there is because we want to look at individual kids too. So it's it's a little both.
Yeah, I don't think we lose the individual kids, they're still there. It just, it it reflects the fact that we still have a significant chunk of students who are getting, for whatever reason, and and it, you know, may have a lot to do with their individual desires about what their future path is going to be, which may not include a pile of AP classes.
And some of it may have to do with awareness too, right? So, you know, that's why we we're going to the hub now.
Right, you have to figure it out.
Yep, thank you.
And if you go back about fifteen or twenty years, that that percentage was zero.
Right.
So Yeah, yeah.
So you have to remember, you know, that this is a a, an ongoing commitment on our part.
Right, and you know, what I want to add, and this takes absolutely nothing away from the work that you all are doing, with Team ASAP, but simply recruiting and encouraging and all that is just, that's sort of the tail end, that's the last piece. It's all the work we've done to prepare those students to be able to take those courses since they got here and even before. That's that's where I think the rubber hits the road.
And if if it's
We have so many more kids that are now ready from all the subgroups. You saw that early in that, when we really got after this, right? Goes back five or six years, those those line graphs. Go back nine, ten years to when, for instance, we detract the freshman year and ramped up, you know, a lot of the curriculum, you know, that those are the kind of things that are starting to pay off and have increased every subgroup. And and then the work you're doing to recruit them and get them ready, you know, in the moment is sort of the finishing touch.
Well, it might be nice to see some of the data around the, even the twos. I don't know about the ones, but but given this, you always cite to this data about just taking the class makes, has an impact on your persistence through post-secondary. Scores of one or two, you know, will incrementally increase that persistence. So it might actually be nice to see a little bit more around that too.
I think that's
I know you got a lot to.
We could, we could absolutely do that. And we could also include, you know, in working with NIRA, we've looked at the percentage of students who persist, right? And and whether they take an AP class or not and what that correlates to. And it starts with you take one AP class and you go from thirty percent persistence to sixty. Your persistence score doubles just by taking, not not getting a three, just taking one. And that's one thing to think about.
The class or the exam?
Uh, the exam, just taking the exam. The other thing to think about along these lines is that, you know, the work that we're doing here with the luncheons, with the AP luncheons, and how that is really a support group for students. I don't want to lose sight of that. When we talk about belonging and we talk about the importance of belonging, what we're really talking about is, as adults, we can say you belong, we invite you, you belong. But it's when the peers step up and they're really looking out for one another and they're sharing in a very supportive group. That's really where the support piece happens. And that's where would the kids stay in the class, right? And they are successful.
I think we've broken out the data in a number of different ways as well. You know, one of the the data points that we look at is the walk across the stage data, that, you know, three out of every four students, you know. So we might, if we don't hit a student junior year, we'll hit them senior year. I think you're alluding to the fact that there's more work to be done. What we did was we looked at, what is that, twenty-five percent of the students who are those students? We've looked at them one at a time, we looked at their transcripts, where are they at? And oftentimes, you know, we're we're challenging some of those students to to get an honors credit, you know, and then the next step after that would be AP. We've also done some targeted kind of, you know, initiatives, if you will. I don't know if you want to speak to the AP chemistry, how we're actually specifically looking at a group of students in Chem Regular and Chem Honors.
Sure, so actually, it's tomorrow, our informational meeting for AP chemistry. So that's the course that I teach. I find the deficit that we're seeing with our black and Latino students not acceptable. And so since I've been teaching that course, we've we've made some strides slowly. And a lot of that has just been like word of mouth. Or, you know, I've found that I have had the best success when I'm able to speak to a student individually. But of course, I I don't have access to all the students individually. So what Stephen Spite, the other AP chemistry teacher, and I have done is we pulled the data of all the black and Latino students who earned an A or B in honors chemistry or an A in regular chemistry. And we invited them to an informational session about AP chemistry tomorrow. And we reminded them that by attending the meeting, they're not committing to take the course. But just so that we can have a conversation to remind them that that's a course available to them and to gauge their interests or answer any questions if they're like a little bit interested but have reservations about this, if we can kind of talk them through that in hopes of kind of more quickly closing this gap a little bit.
That's where we've seen most of the growth, is those individual conversations, actual, you know, get to the per kid level and and figure out what's best for each student. So we have, there's more work to be done, but that's where we're looking at right now.
I have a question. Along those those lines, I'm more interested in the experience. So you you talked about the one-on-one conversations and bringing students together and getting their feedback. I know as it relates to black students, if if they don't have that sense of belonging in that classroom, then they will either drop or word of mouth will will circulate and, you know, and 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 there will be a problem going forward with other black students taking those AP classes just because they don't feel comfortable or welcome. So I'm I'm interested in in the, in what's being said, like what students are sharing with you that have gone through AP or that are going through AP, what the feedback has been and how it's being used to make them feel more welcoming. And then also, I think I asked this last time, but again, do we know how many black students have started or attempted an AP class and dropped out? And for what, for what reasons are they not completing? I mean, this is, this is great information and it definitely gives us some indication of where we are and where we, of course, need to be and nobody's satisfied, you know, with this. But I'm interested in what we don't know and what I'm not hearing.
Yeah, so at our lunch meetings, a lot of our students of color bring up some of the sentiments that you mentioned about in which courses do they feel like they have a sense of belonging and and what individual things are happening in a particular class. And in our meetings, we do try to have students talk about the experience less than like, well, this teacher did this or something like that. But but those kind of specific experiences that they're having somewhere. For example, one thing that came up was something about group chats that students start in a in a class, not teacher moderated, but it's typical in the class for someone to start a class group chat. And then the whole class contributes. And our Team ASAP students reported that often our students of color are left out of the group chat. And when we kind of delve a little bit deeper, some felt like it was an intentional, intentional piece, they were intentionally left off. Other students kind of sensed that it wasn't intentional, but it like started with a group of friends and more people got added and they just weren't in that group of friends. So we kind of took some time to have students brainstorm ideas with ways we as Team ASAP could address that issue. And a couple of students mentioned that in their classes, while it was entirely student-based, the group chat, in their class, they, a student posted on the Google Classroom, which is accessible to all students, how to join the group chat. And so they asked us as Team ASAP to reach out to the teachers and like make that suggestion and say like, can you please open up your Google Classroom to make sure that everyone has access to this? If you feel comfortable, can you have that conversation with your class about making sure everyone feels included? So I believe it was Josh who drafted an email about it that we sent out to all AP teachers. And then we also, when we had our IASAP meetings, which are meetings for AP teachers around the work that's being done in Team ASAP, we brought it up again there. So that's just one example of when a student reported a a feeling of not belonging and we we tried to address it, yeah. And again, with those conversations about race and equity in AP that we're being more conscious about having in those meetings, more things like that are coming up that allow us to at at least make some progress in addressing them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your second question was about, and there's other areas that we we try to make those conversations happen as well. The drops, I remember that question from last year. We do have, we do track it. We don't have, I don't have that data in front of me. You know, I have the anecdotal data as math department chair. You know, we really, I think all the department chairs, if it's AP, we really try to have the students come to our office and have that conversation and just say, hey, here's all the supports that Evanson has to offer, you know, what's going on? You know, what's what's really happening in the class, to be encouraging to them, to make sure that they have the support. Sometimes like not allowing that drop to happen. But I think that's something that we need to to look at, the data. I know that we've had less drops, but to really look at that and dig in a little bit. You know, there's certain departments who are like, you can't drop. You know, I think a lot of the the philosophy and from our students too, they say, hey, if you can make it through that first couple of weeks, it's hard, it's an adjustment. Sometimes in math, for example, you go from pre-calc regular and then it's an AP class. So you're jumping, you know, kind of two levels, if you will. And that initial challenge, a lot of our students will say, if you can just make it through those first couple of weeks, then you'll start to get used to the new workload and and how do you do that, right? And and we even, we made a support video because it wasn't really obvious where all the supports were. They come to my office and I'm like, hey, have you talked to your teacher? AM support, you know, there's all the things that the students know about, but there's a list of about twenty or thirty supports. So Tina and Josh made an AP support video that's really great, you should go check it out. But it it just laid out, like here are what the supports are. It's not like I'm struggling in class and I can't get a tutor or I I need a tutor. Have you done all these other things? These are the things that students who, you know, it's looking really easy for them. They bought an AP review book on day one, they, you know, are going to these, you know, websites. They're connecting with their study groups or their teachers, do you know about all these resources? And so we kind of made a video again that said, like, here it is. This is basically the conversation that I'll have as a department chair with a student that's, you know, thinking about dropping. And I think a lot of the chairs, you know, kind of reinforce that message as well. But we we try to put that out there, like, hey, here's, here's that conversation out there for you to have. And I think, you know, we've seen less drops, we should run the numbers on that. Whenever I have those conversations, I don't want to say it's anecdotal because I have the list of reasons why the students drop, right? And so I think, you know, maybe compiling that list from the other conversations from, you know, my chairs, my chair counterparts, you know, that have AP courses. You know, but oftentimes, it's those top ten courses, you know, that Pete highlighted earlier, you know, those are the courses where you see, you know, drops. And digging in a little bit on why that is, I have a lot of that information on why. And and early on, it's it's pushing through that that initial step, but with support, like, how can we support you through that step and not just leave you alone in that challenge? I think that's where most of our conversations lie. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, you do, well, you did.
And I don't have the hard, the hard data on that today.
I'd like to go back and and tell a little story about the importance of belonging because it's part that you're so right about how vital that is. Pete, would you go back to the graph showing the percentage of juniors and seniors by race who are taking AP classes? Yeah, that one. So as you can see, of of all the juniors and seniors, twenty-nine percent, almost thirty percent of the black students are now taking, you know, at least AP classes. It goes up to seventy-seven percent of the white kids, fifty-seven percent of our Latino kids. This is not ancient history. When I came here in two thousand and six, the the new principal of ETHS was Marilyn Madden. But Marilyn had been the Director of Student Services here for a number of years. And what she shared with me is that there were many cases where there might only be three students of color taking, let's say, an AP history class. And what Marilyn did for years, and was still doing it in two thousand and six, she would hand-schedule those three students into the same section. So when they went into that AP history class, they were not the only. And that was the intervention for years. That was the intervention. And now, when you listen to these people talk and you realize the interventions, and now when you walk into those classes, you know, you know, thirty, almost thirty percent of your classmates are are in some of these classes, fifty-seven percent. It's it's a lot different story trying to create that sense of belonging. And 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 my hope, and I think you can hear it through through these amazing leaders, is that that this has a multiplying effect, that as we keep increasing those numbers, that sense of belonging becomes more and more real to more and more students.
I just, to amplify that, I think that in these settings, in the Team ASAP lunch meeting, in the cap, Team ASAP captains' meetings, trying to make sure that there is always a space for conversations about equity and about those individual experiences and about that kind of qualitative experience and hearing a student, especially students of color, hearing them about how it felt. And validating that, I think, and then also, as you go into classrooms, making sure that that is a live, open conversation, that helping teachers keep that conversation open, helping their peer, helping students learn how to, you know, monitor the agreements and how to have these conversations is 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 something that, you know, I'm just thinking of, I have seniors, I have a non-AP senior class and we were talking one day about why you have or haven't taken AP classes. And it just came up in a separate context, but they ended up writing something. And I was really struck by how many of the students of color reported some similar experiences. And they, I remember one young woman says, I said, you know, I'm not, it's not about And they, I remember one young woman says, you know, I'm not, it's not about, I'm, I knew everything I needed to know to be in that class, but I was not, you know, how did it feel to be in that class? That's what she wanted to talk about and she wanted people to know how it felt. And so I, I think trying to find ways to make sure that that is part of the conversation always, regardless of what the topic on a given day is, that that's an angle, that whatever conversation we're having can include that is, is an important part of the work.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you having that conversation. It's critical.
So do I. I think that that's real conversation, real-time conversation for students to participate in. Not just students of color, but for white students. Because they never get to hear, they, they don't hear those stories. They don't hear what their peers are experiencing and, and they need to hear them and they need to understand that they don't have those experiences. They just kind of flow right into the classes. I, and I really appreciate the story about the, the group chat because I think, once again, you know, I, I believe in that, that folks have good intentions. I don't, you know, I'm sure that there are times when, when students might be left out on purpose. But really to take the time and have students reflect on what that's like and how that's got to feel. And especially in, in, in an environment that has been historically white space. It's so important to just go ahead and, and put that out there and say it so that students can hear it. And, and then of course, the hope is that they'll start thinking in a broader sense, you know? So this is this space. So what about other experiences in, in my life where there's white space and how to broaden that?
I think there would be advantageous for us to really zero in on building community in the classroom because that's essentially what we're talking about, whether it's AP and AP environment or just other, other classrooms. I think we would really benefit from taking a deeper dive into what the data is saying about the students who either dropped AP courses or don't, don't, don't make that, that number three. Because we're saying it supports, there may be other trends that, that pop up. It may be teaching practices because now you're dealing with a wider range of student, pro, of students from different sub, subgroups. Have to take that into consideration too. So I, I really think it would be well worth our time to see what the data is saying about those students that either end up dropping or don't score that three.
So you answered a lot of my questions already, so I only have ones sort of additional. Which is what, can you give some examples of what is happening among the teachers to help them to do all these things that you've just talked about? And, and to build their own sense of community and understanding and awareness as well as to do that with the kids?
Sure. So we do, as part of Team ASEP, we hold quarterly meetings. Actually, sorry, this year there's semester meetings for teachers only. That gives Josh and I an opportunity to debrief everything that we're sharing directly from the students. For our one coming up, we were actually considering, we have one coming up this month. And we were just the other day tossing around the idea of actually having some of our ABCs, our Advisory Board captains, present at the meeting so that they could share firsthand some of these experiences that we're talking about. It's one thing when we write an email to everybody about it, to say like the students are saying this versus teachers actually hearing it from the students. So that's definitely one way that we try to collaborate with the teachers. The other thing is we do invite all AP teachers to our monthly lunch meetings so that hopefully they're present to hear the start of that conversation. And then they can go out and, and continue that conversation either with other AP teachers or with us and so forth. So we do try as much as we can to have a community of AP teachers at the school to be talking about these, these issues. And also just sharing best practices that you mentioned, community building. So in the past, one of our focuses of, of the teacher meeting has been about sharing best practices around community building in AP.
I, I think it's individual conversations with teachers. There's sixty-nine AP teachers, but really, you know, even if you look at the course recommendation process and, you know, reaching down to the feeder classes, if you will. You know, what's the class before, you know, whether it's regular honors, you know, mixed level earned honors, whatever level it is, but how do you reach the teachers before that? Because really it's a, it's an entire pathway that gets you, you know, we have an event called Pathways to AP, but it is, it is that entire pathway. So you look at the, you know, sixty-nine AP teachers, but also the teachers that come before and just having conversations of like, how can we best prepare the kids? So I think my Algebra II team, like they need this for calc, you know, or they don't know this, you know, we need to reinforce this. Throughout the pathway, you look at our, you know, revisions in geometry, like what, what are the, what are the things that we need to, you know, really focus on that they will need, you know, on the, on the end in calc? So it's kind of those conversations, but a lot of times at the event, it's just, you know, one of us or, you know, a conversation, you know, with the students and a teacher. Just individual conversations, how's it going? What's happening? What's the experience? Have you talked to your students? The, one of the benefits of Team ASEP is the kids just speak freely, here's my experience and, and the teachers are there and they, they get to hear that. In certain cases, we've taken a course team with a group of students, students of color, and just said, here's what the experience is. Do you, do you recognize that? You know, what can we do to, to make it a different space, a different experience for us? And sometimes it's more individual with a teacher, but I think just continuing to have those conversations. Sometimes a structured conversation and sometimes more informal. And really to not have it be just APs, this one, like, there's a thousand students in AP. Three out of every four students take AP. We're, we're planning them, planning to have them be successful there along the pathways. So it really involves all of us. There's a trickle down, even for the students who don't end up taking an AP class. They might take dual credit, they might be reaching for honors, you know, like how can we make it a, a community effort surrounding those kids? I think we really try to have those conversations, sometimes again, very structured and sometimes more informal.
No, that's good. I, I guess just hearing you talk about some of the personalization, both in terms of outreach and, and providing knowledge to students this is available and you, you fit in, you belong, as well as the academic supports. It feels like the, that's, that is, there's an intentionality to, to that, that you all are doing. And I just was curious to the extent that we can spread that intentionality among all the teachers. And you're right, Dale, that it's, it goes beyond just your AP teachers.
Right. And it's, it's not like here's the three steps.
Right. No, I, I totally get it. Yeah.
Complex.
Totally get it. Yeah.
You know, conversations that, and everybody is somewhere along the continuum, including myself. So I think, you know, just we'll continue the work moving forward.
Just to add one thing to that, one of the course teams actually came to us and said, could you sit in on, we want to listen to our students of color. Could you sit in on the meeting? I asked permission to sit in on the meeting, listen to students. And the teachers were very grateful to hear from the students, creating a safe environment. The teachers just sat back. The, the guideline was the teachers would just sit back and listen. And to provide a space that was safe where the, the students could talk about their experience openly. And without being filtered in the moment, right? I think as adults, sometimes we tend to filter in the moment. What you're really trying to say is, no, you know, that kind of thing. And teachers just remained silent and listened for about an hour and a half as students really told their story. And, you know, that was something where a course team came to us and said, hey, we're interested in doing this. Can you, can you give us some help on this? And, and we did.
No, that's great. Because again, I think knowing how to even invite student voice and then to know what to do with it. And your point about not filtering it, because we are adults and we do that all the time and we're teachers and that's even, you know, another angle of it. I think that's really important. So, yeah, that's, that's important. One last question, sorry, I'm interested in this professional piece. Is there something before the school year starts where in the, maybe the early professional development you all do at the end of the summer around your AP teachers that kind of gets them sort of launched with sort of some of these great things that you're doing?
So I mean, every, every teacher before they become an AP teacher goes through training. As part of that training, pretty much, you know, across the board, college board is, you know, has an equity message as part of that training. We have, summer camp is probably our quick boost before we go in, so it's a full week where the teachers run summer camps with their students. We're there to support those events, to make sure the philosophy gets out there. It, it is about the academics, but it is about the wellbeing as well. So how do you mix those, you know? You can call it team building, if you will, but how do you make sure that there's that sense of belonging before students even step into the door day one? AP can be a scary place. And so how do you, how do you make it not that way? And so we might invite, you know, former students to those events, but really that's the kind of, before the school year starts, that's really the booster where there's a lot of community created amongst the teachers and students, you know, with each other. And also there's the college application piece that's part of that as well. You know, in the afternoon, students sometimes are mixing AP senior year with their first AP classes with college application process. So how do you even create kind of that, you know, environment where they can think of both things, prepare and, and create some community around that? So that's probably the closest to the school year. But again, if you look at the, the year before, starting at really the Pathways to AP Forum and the AP Fair in December, you know, all of those events are looking to, to create that community, spring training, you know, this is next year's students, you're seeing them in the spring. Supportive summer assignments, a lot of the teachers have opened up, you know, kind of office hours or communication structures through the summer to work with students before they even get here. And then the kickoff is really that summer cap event in August and college applications as part of that as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
I, I think I may have a little bit of different take on the numbers than, than Gretchen. I, I think these are incredibly impressive numbers. And I, and I real, these are real students. And I think that, I really think that this initiative has done more to advance Goal One, that is increase each student's academic and functional trajectory than any single initiative that's been undertaken since I've been on the board. And I, I mean, when you see numbers like, you know, the, the thirty-four percent of black students in two thousand and twelve who were getting a, a three or higher on the AP and goes to forty-nine percent, that's, that's big. And the, the Latino students from forty-eight percent to sixty-seven percent, that's big. And it, and, and, and you're showing that access is not the enemy of success, that, that the success follows access. And I think it's really interesting. Mark mentioned the freshman restructuring and I think it's interesting to, to observe that this initiative has had a somewhat different philosophy than the restructuring. Because as, as Pat said, the, the AP classes were historically white spaces. And the straight honors classes were historically white spaces. But with these historically white spaces, we didn't say, because they're not reflective of our student body, we're not going to have them anymore. We said, we're going to push and support and nurture and, 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 and make these formerly white spaces reflective of the student body of our school. And so I just think it's, it is a very, I recognize it's a work in progress, but I think it's a very impressive achievement.
I think what I'd like to add is that when we made the decision to push into these spaces, students who were not typically a part of them, we were also communicating very loudly that we believe you belong there. And we believe you're capable of being there. And so we then worked backwards, as, as Mark said, and, and in two thousand and eleven, right? Is that when we adopted the equity statement and started doing the, the de-tracking? Is that, is that right? So those years were the years that we started really communicating loudly to students that we think you are able to do this. We think you're capable of doing this and we give you the, the, the academic preparation and the supports. Thank you for going through all of those supports. I'd love to see that video, by the way. I'd just love to see it. Yes, thank you. I just, I, I, I think just making that available to students and giving them the message constantly is so important. And I just want to point out that they don't always get that message. And even while we're giving that message, they may be hearing counter narratives. I'm sure they are, not maybe. We know they are. Both subtly and overtly, those microaggressions that come from people that may not intend to give them those, those stories. My daughter even told me she was gonna drop out of her AP English class af, after she was doing so well because she heard somebody here, an adult, say, wow, do you think you can take four APs? You think you can do that? That's all she needed. So she told us, when we were on vacation, I think I'm gonna drop AP English. What? Where'd you get that from?
She told you that?
Yeah, she told me that.
How'd that work out for her? I'm just wondering.
I kind of blew up. Both my husband and I, we thought we'd come and blow up the school. That was our first step. But just, it was, it was not intended to be hurtful. It was intending to take care of her. You've got four APs, that's a lot. Are you sure you can do it? Now she had done very well, very well, excellent. And was looking at a very competitive school, was looking at Wash U. So I'm thinking, you drop AP English, that's not gonna count. So again, we have to just recognize that kids are constantly getting those subtle messages.
All right. I, I think you, you pointed out the two thousand and eleven, I mean, that's when Team ASEP was founded. It was nine students on a panel that said, what else can we do? I want to be, I want to represent the AP program. That was a diverse panel of students, students of color saying, I want to put a T-shirt on my back that says, follow me and, and I belong. And, yeah, I think you can kind of see the students encouraging each other through that process too.
You know, I would just like to add three things that occurred simultaneously, so it's hard to tease out causality, right? So there is definitely a correlation in the data between the, the creation of Team ASEP, the, the restructuring of freshman year and, and I would say the training of staff and beyond diversity. All kind of happening simultaneously over several years. And then the, the identity summits that we do, you know, there's social consciousness programming, all around, all around belonging, all around wellbeing. And I really think that, you know, when you take that as a sum total, we really shifted the climate and began to shift the climate here so that we could see these results. And that's why the work is ongoing. That's why we now have groups of teachers saying, hey, we want to get together as a course team and have this conversation with our students. Now they want to do it. How they do it, right? You know, we can come in and support that. But just that willingness and, and being able as a student to be able to share your story in that context. It doesn't happen by, by just opening the doors. It doesn't happen through putting kids in freshman humanities altogether. It doesn't happen by opening up advanced placement. It happens over time and it's weaved into the fabric. So, you know, and this is a good transition, yeah, I'm gonna do a preemptive transition to the later on report. The later on report, I don't really want to have conversations around causality in that report because I think it's, it's a sum total of the work we have done as a district. Whether it was setting the table in two thousand, two thousand and one, two thousand and two, two thousand and three, whether it was like, you know, preparing the meal in the subsequent years, we're not ready to eat yet, right? We're not ready to eat from the same table yet. Eat well. And we're working toward that time when we can actually do that. So this is all me just saying, you know, we had to be really careful with causality and stuff. But I would say it's a sum total of all of those equity efforts, all the efforts on the students' behalf, the staff transitioning and changing and developing their racial equity lens, the leadership. The board played an instrumental role in all of this work. And I think that's the big story writ large. I don't think you could tease, I, I have a real hard time teasing it apart.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
But I do know stuff has changed.
Yes.
For the better. One thing I want to do though, before we, I, I gotta get this in. For the first time, we started to monitor IEP and five oh four accommodations and we started to include those results in our report. So if you go, if you look at the report, you'll see that last year we had twenty-eight students with IEPs take advanced placement. Fifteen of them scored a three or higher, which means that's fifty-four percent for that subgroup. And we did the same thing for five oh four accommodations. Ninety-five students with five oh four, sixty-nine kids were three or higher, sixty-eight percent success rate. So that's just something, again, as we, as we do the work, we realize that there are certain things we haven't looked at. So we've integrated that into the report and we'll report that moving on.
Finally, I want to point out that it's not only about access and belonging. Because if students are not equipped to do well in the classes, then we, we have totally failed them by, by encouraging them to take classes they're not prepared to take.
Sure.
And what the restructuring did is it wasn't long ago that when you came into this school, you were placed at one of five levels. And only one of them had the best and most demanding and most challenging curriculum that this school could offer. And each level below it And each level below it had a less demanding curriculum. And students with those lower levels were not getting the preparation, the tools. They were not being equipped to, to go in. So, you know, you can throw somebody in the ocean and tell them to swim, but have you taught them to swim? And so what, what we really did is made sure that now all the incoming students get the best curriculum. And in fact, we'll have many teachers who designed that curriculum to say, it's even more challenging than the most challenging curriculum was at that time. And so it is a combination of equip students, give them the tools, give them the challenge. And then make sure that they understand that they belong and that access is so important.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing. Amazing. Yes. I like that too.
Needs a little work, but I like it.
I like it. I like it. I'm putting Dr. Davis' name.
Dr. Davis, thank you. We're gonna quote you about that table, setting the table.
Something about the big dogs.
Not ready to eat yet.
Okay.
Well, all right, so the district progress review. All right, this is a ver, there's a lot of slide, what I did was I took literally almost every slide that was in the pre, in the report and gave it a slide. I don't intend to talk about all of them. I tend to go fairly quickly through the report. And then, you know, entertain questions about the collection of data, maybe have a board discussion. Again, I don't wanna dip into causal things, but I will, a couple of things to keep in mind. Purpose and limitations. So this report outlines a recent history of Emerson Township High School. Sift through the data to highlight important trends, acknowledge successful efforts, and identify enduring challenges. The report is limited in scope by the types of historical data that was collected and reported at the time. As much as I would like to be able to run statistical analyses, that's the work of NERA, they do all the regressions and all that. This is simply looking at information collected over the years in achievement reports, statistical reports, and opening of school reports. I put in some trend lines using Excel and you'll see like where the trend lines, where we exceed the trend lines or we're below the trend lines. And we can talk about that as we click through the presentation. Another thing to keep in mind is that there are some very simplistic, most of the acad, all of the academic indicators are external. And what that means is we didn't use grades because grades are subjective to a certain extent, although in aggregate you could probably argue that they're not, but we didn't look at those. What we looked at were external pieces like the ACT and advanced placement. So for the advanced placement slides, I cut it a couple of different ways that I don't normally do for reports, just for, just to provide some historical context. The ACT, I have that chart. But you know, one of the things you find out when you do a historical look at things is that things were not always disaggregated by race. Suspensions, if you go back far enough, were just reported in the aggregate. ACT scores, if you go back far enough, were just reported in the aggregate. So I apologize in advance for what you see is what you get. You can ask for disaggregated stuff, I could pass that off to someone who could run the statistics perhaps. But again, I was just looking at previous achievement, opening a school and statistical reports as I did this. All right, enough of the preamble. We ready to get on with this? All right, let's go. We looked at demographics, ACT scores, advanced placement, discipline, ETHS Foundation and Alumni Association, which translates into capital improvement. Technology advances, a little bit on financing, some, some bit on staffing and some challenges. One of the things you're gonna notice, we had increased enrollment and demographic changes over time. I would like to, you know, one of the things I did in a second look through at this report, I included percentages for the demographics. Because I realized that while everything increased and something increased at different rates, it would be really nice, I was given a little tip, a little hint. That would be nice to include that. So what I did was I went back and I included those demographic pieces as percentages of enrollment by year. We look at ACT scores, advanced placement, we saw increases in those over time. We saw a decrease in suspensions and improved reporting. And improved reporting is my editorializing. The reports we write now are far more nuanced than the reports we wrote fifteen, twenty years ago. And fusion of equity, school board action, school board restructuring, equity and excellence statement, district goals work. District goal one, for example, which is one of the things I contributed to in facilitating, is very prominent in the work. Beyond diversity, all of our teachers and staff are beyond diversity. They go through beyond diversity training. Ongoing professional development on social emotional learning, on equity, on assessment. And a whole variety of different professional development, that's been a constant. And finally, the social consciousness summits, again, to create a sense of well-being within our student body, to affirm student experiences. These are all things that changed. I am not suggesting that taken individually, any of these things are causal. But together, they're pretty potent and pretty powerful to keep front of mind as we go through these slides. Demographic changes since two thousand and six, hundred and fourteen percent increase, these are raw numbers in Hispanic Latino enrollment. Eleven percent decrease in black enrollment, fourteen percent increase in white enrollment, and a nineteen percent increase in overall enrollment. So let's go to the videotape. Here you see the percentages of enrollment. So in two thousand and seven, ETHS, thirty-seven percent of our total enrollment was black African-American. Today it's twenty-seven percent. Hispanic Latinos made up ten percent of our population in two thousand and seven at the high school, and now you see that that's at eighteen percent. White students were forty-seven percent, today they are forty-six percent. And then I included special education enrollment as a function to look at. Thirteen percent of students enrolled at ETHS in two thousand and seven were in special education. Today we see eleven percent of students in special education at the high school. Here's what the, the racial data looks like in graph, in graphic, you know, in a graph. You'll see the green graph is our white population, the blue line is our black population, and the red line is our Hispanic Latino population. Just a graphic, another way to look at the data. Ready? All right. And here you see, it's a very interesting demo, if you look at demographic, it's a pretty linear increase in the number of Latino students over time. Black students are fairly flat, a little down in terms of total, white enrollment is a little bit up. When I looked at special education enrollment, it was very interesting and I'm glad I ran the percentages because it makes a little bit of sense of this chart. As our population overall declined in two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen, you saw a subsequent dip in special education enrollment. Special education did not, as a percentage, did not decrease all that much. So it explains this. Total enrollment is up. You see from three thousand and forty-one students in oh six oh seven to three thousand six hundred and thirteen students in the opening of school report this past fall. Here's our ACT, this is like greatest hits, right? Our ACT scores are here. What I'd like to point out about the ACT scores is, and, and let me just get the actual quote here because it's kinda, kinda fun. I love the ACT chart because it goes back to nineteen seventy-two. It was the one thing I could find that went back to nineteen seventy-two. It also includes my wife, my wife's graduation years up there. It's somewhere in the eighties and I won't give any more hints than that. I have to go home tonight. So the, so each year from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen, ETHS, you know, posted scores, you know, above twenty-three. During that time, we posted our highest composite score of twenty-three point nine in two thousand and fifteen. And in nine of the last ten years, we, ten of our, nine of our top ten scores were posted within the, that ten-year timeframe. And then, of course, the ACT sunset. So now we gotta start building a data set around SAT. But again, this tells a very interesting story. If you go back to the year seventy-two, all the way up into the early two thousands, you'll notice that those were the years that only college bound students took the ACT. You'll notice that in two thousand and two, we started universal testing in Illinois. You'll see that the pink, the pink lines, trend lines are the state test data and the blue line is the ETHS data. Again, it was a requirement for all juniors to take the ACT as part of the graduation requirement. You'll also notice that in two thousand and thirteen, we started, the college board started reporting special education students and all extra time students as part of that score. And you see our scores continue to be at a very high level. So when, when the ACT actually sunset as a measure, it was a fairly comprehensive measure of how you were doing as a school. I looked at disaggregating by race. I was able to go back to two thousand and seven and the composite. There was a trend line superimposing there. You can see the years we were over the trend line and the years we were below the trend line. The trend line was derived the same way the trend line for the demographic data was derived. It's an Excel add-on. You click trend line and it puts a statistical trend line in there. But you see we went from seventeen point two in two thousand and seven to eighteen point four. And we had three scores of eight, of eighteen or higher in fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Hispanic Latino data, we go from a nineteen in two thousand and seven to a twenty point eight in two thousand and seventeen, and that trend is upward as well. Our white students, they are, they fluctuate from twenty-seven to twenty-eight point two. And, you know, they, they hover around to twenty-eight, twenty-seven, five. But you see the trend line, we ended on an up note. At twenty-eight point one composite. Transition to the advanced placement, we saw this, we did this last report. Sorry, if you wanna go over it, we can. I did add a couple of new slides in here though. Oh, here's the percentage of students who walk across stage taking one AP exam or more. And that's the percentage. So seventy percent of our graduates in two thousand and eighteen took one or more. In two thousand and seventeen, it was seventy-two percent. And in two thousand, we only started collecting this data in two thousand and eleven, but it was fifty-eight percent then. So you see that we've increased that over time. Black students walk across stage in two thousand and eighteen was forty-two percent, in two thousand and seventeen it was forty-eight percent. This again speaks to the, what we talked about earlier in terms of doing, being very intentional around our access points. And, and recruiting students to take AP and creating belonging environments. You'll see our Hispanic Latino students who walk across stage, we went from forty-three percent in two thousand and eleven to sixty-four percent, it's a fairly linear increase over time. Our white students have, you know, about eighty-six to eighty-seven percent. I believe we had a high of ninety in two thousand and seventeen. But again, you're running into what's called a ceiling effect where you're gonna bounce around at that level for a while. I did this piece called Historical Focus. I took four, five of the, the AP courses that I could tra, I could take all the way back to nineteen eighty-four. That had, had not gone under, underwent significant change. So I did not include, and I talked about this in the report, I didn't include AP Literature and Composition. It used to be the only show in town and then AP Language and Composition showed up. And, and a ton of kids take that and they don't take AP senior year, so I didn't think that was an apt comparison. But I did pull these, so let's take a look. I looked at the numbers of threes or higher. These are actually the students who earned threes or higher. There's a corresponding chart in your report. In eighty-four, we had thirty-eight students get a, get a three or higher. In oh six, we had a hundred and sixteen, and in twenty eighteen, we had a hundred and forty-seven. For some reason, I have data from nineteen eighty-four because somewhere along the line in creating these reports, going back far enough, they used eighty-four as like a flagship. So it goes eighty-four and literally two thousand and six. I don't know why, where that decision was made, but that's what I have. Again, limitations. But I also looked at four or higher because I know that, you know, my neighbors often ask, you know, but what about the fours and higher? Threes, I understand getting kids across a certain threshold, but how many kids went beyond that? Sixteen students in nineteen eighty-four. Again, this is taking into consideration that it was a very small group of students that had access to advanced placement. Seventy students in two thousand and six and seventy-eight students earned a four or higher last school year. Let's look at a course that, you know, is twice as fast and twice as deep. We're looking at VC Calc, which is a really difficult advanced placement class. Again, you see a similar trend, thirty-two students got a three or higher in eighty-four, sixty-eight in oh six, and eighty-seven in twenty eighteen. Again, this, there were, data was not disaggregated for AP in oh six or eighty-four. It is in eighteen. That's why these aren't disaggregated. And here's your four or higher, twenty-seven, sixty-eight, seventy-four along those same trend lines. Bio, forty students, seems like a lot of students were taking that in comparison, you know, are doing quite well back in nineteen eighty-four. You saw fifty-one in oh six and eighty last school year. And again, here's the four or higher, which is very interesting, from twenty-two to twenty-four to forty-one. So we've done very well in terms of the four or higher in bio. Chemistry, you see an increase in threes or higher over that same time period from twenty-seven to seventy-eight. This is the chemistry that your chem phys students would take. And then we democratized chemistry somewhere along the line and said, we'll have a standalone AP chemistry program. It predates me, I think it was about ten, twelve, about, probably about twelve years ago we did that. And we did that because we said, you know, maybe some kids will be interested in taking AP Chem. We did not destroy the chem phys program. It continues to thrive, but we've opened access. And as you'll see, our fours and higher, we've, we've done quite well. So students are continuing to do well there. And again, US History, US History, this is the story of the threes. A lot of students get threes in AP US History currently. And then when we look at fours, we see that we've gone down a little bit. So again, we'd have to look at that, figure out what the work is at the four level. But again, that's why we look at this kind of information. Students taking AP, this is the raw number of students taking advanced placement. I know it's so tiny. It goes from, I believe that might be nineteen ninety-three, I think it's a ninety, what is it?
Nineteen ninety-five.
Ninety-five, very good. Your eyes are better than mine. You're closer to the monitor.
I'm at a hundred and thirty percent.
And then you see the percentage of total enrollment is right there and that's increased over time. These graphs look eerily similar. One is enrollment and the other one is percentage of enrollment. So again, this tells the tale of, of opening up access. Again, this is using as the denominator the entire enrollment. And you may say, well, you just said not to do that, prev, in your previous report. Well, this is what was going on when it was reported like ten years ago, so I went and put those numbers in. There it is. This may look familiar. Again, this is very interesting. If you go back far enough, we really didn't disaggregate suspensions by race. And there was very little discipline information I could, you could find annual, you know, in the, in the, um, opening a school report or that, one of those reports. You would see total suspensions. That's what we would track, total suspensions. But you know, a, as we've evolved, we started to look disaggregating by race. This is the total, you know, three hundred and twelve unique black students were suspended in nine, in two thousand and nine, ten. That was down to a hundred and thirty-four students last school year. And then you see similar, you see sixty-one Latino, you see the growth in population. I also have this in percentage form for you. White students are flat, a little down. Here's the percentage of black students enrolled that are suspended. So we went from about thirty percent down to, I think that's like about, maybe like fourteen percent. Latino students, about fif, about sixteen percent, down to under ten percent suspended. And these are unique students, right? These aren't total suspensions. These are unique students. Like if you get suspended five times, you count once in this. And white students, you know, they went up a little bit in suspensions last year. But again, they're, that's again, that's a floor effect. They're, they're hovering between four and a half percent to a low of, you know, under two percent, so. Moving on, ETHS Foundation Alumni Association. We have a very robust alumni association. The amount of members in the alumni association is staggering. Sixty thousand living members in the alumni association. That's pretty incredible. I have the book, they just put a book out, Alumni Association Book. My wife's a member of the Alumni Association. It's like that thick, the director. It's incredible. I think there's sixty thousand entries in it. But you know, the, the highlight here is that our alumni give, our alumni make up the bulk of our giving, right? And I wanted to highlight that. And then this laundry list of just fabulous, fabulous renovations and capital improvements. That, that have happened in the very recent history. You know, the foundation was founded, it was created in oh five and really didn't get up and running until a couple of years later. But if you look at this track record, everything from Lazzier Field Automotive Tech Lab, I think we forget that our automotive lab was really done through the foundation, through foundation funding. Student Commons and Bike Compound. It wasn't there, it wasn't, I mean, this is incredible. The, the Renewable Energy Lab, the Ecology Lab, the Transition House, furnishing the Transition House. Everything, Main Auditorium Curtains. I remember the Main Auditorium Curtains project. That was really, really important. Those curtains were in, in dire need of repair and safety issues and we, we covered it all. Auditor, you know, Wireless Campus. Auditorium, you know, Wireless Campus, twenty-twelve, they underruled a lot of that work. Four STEM Labs, I remember being here right before opening day, as they were putting, as our folks were putting the finishing touches on those STEM Labs. And Dr. Campbell remembers, we were kind of nervous. It was done, it's incre, it was done on time. The Advanced Manufacturing Lab in two thousand and fourteen, the Leonard Schaefer Theater and Planetarium the same year. Permanent build site for geometry and construction, so the kids don't have to haul the supplies back and forth like they did for the first few houses they built. Don't underestimate how important that is, given the weather we've had lately. The Lake Street Tennis Court Project, the Milligan Entrepreneurship Center, so our Algebra Entrepreneurship kids can have a really nice, awesome, dedicated space. Heritage Hall, the softball grandstands, the ceramic studio, I mean, we talk about one-to-one in computing, we're finally one-to-one in, in, in pottery wheels. You know, we, we, we were three students to one wheel. And then we're one-to-one. That's expensive, this is the kind of stuff that makes us a state-of-the-art school. And our acoustic enhancements, if you have a student who, who sings, who does, you know, who's involved in our music program, four music rooms with acoustical enhancements, that's pretty incredible. So that's my thank you to the foundation.
I just have to mention, Phoebe will enjoy this, being a class of twenty-nineteen. I've just kind of accidentally had five different students from the class of twenty-ten stop by to see me this month. And every one of them said, in one way or another, why didn't you do this when we were here?
I hear that too. My kids say that a lot.
Our technology, I'm not going to pretend to be a technology expert, but we went from six mega bits per second to eight hundred. And I love to do percent increases, that's ridiculous. But I think that keeps pace with the, the, the industry standard probably. Our wireless infrastructure, we have five hundred plus access points for wireless. You know, you had, kind of have to have those when you're a one-to-one school, so that goes hand in hand with that. But five hundred access points, I have one access point in my house and it barely works. The one-to-one digital learning initiative, every ETHS student receives a district-issued laptop. We have the chromosome to do repairs, the, you know, and to get those things up and running as they break or as they go offline, we get the kids online as quickly as possible. If it weren't for our one-to-one digital initiative, we wouldn't be able to have the e-learning day we have coming up, which we're very excited about, but you can only do that, really, if you have the infrastructure to support it, and that's what this speaks to. And something called Voice Over IP Phone System. These are the phones that we have, we, we have over seven hundred plus IP phones. When I, when I came here ten years ago, we were one step away from a rotary phone. And now we have seven hundred IP phones, I'm not kidding, it's incre, the, the leap, there's directories, I mean, you could, you know, on the phone, who knew? But now we have it, and that's a big thank you to our tech department, they've done phenomenal work. Finances, triple-A bond rated, historical record of being triple-A bond rated, GFOA certification, certificate of excellence in financial reporting. These are the awards that Mary gets, every, Mary and Bill get, Bill used to get them, now Mary gets them every year. And I think we, you know, sometimes take them for granted, but we shouldn't, very few districts get those awards. You know, just to put it in, in, to have some context here, just for triple-A bond ratings alone, you know, ninety-six school districts in the United States have a triple-A bond rating. We earned our first bond rating in oh-eight. And how, there are thirteen, there are eight hundred school districts in Illinois and one thou, thirteen thousand five hundred plus across the country. So you know, that's pretty rare.
How many have a triple-A, Pete?
That, that's a very small number, Eric, that's ninety-six. I actually spelled it out, I wrote ninety-six. That's pretty incredible. You know, we first earned it in two thousand and eight, and, and, and every subsequent time it was issued, twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-eighteen. Even when the state was having severe financial crunch, not paying the bills, right, no budget, we were getting triple-A bond ratings, that's testament to our financial stewardship. Yeah, pretty incredible. Oh, yeah, there you go, I should have just clicked the next slide, it's there. These are some staff-faculty ratios. You know, we've been working on this for quite some time. Our staff-faculty, we have fifty-one percent white, our students are forty-five, thereabouts percent. Our black students are, black faculty, thirty-six percent thereabouts, and you compare that to twenty-eight percent of students. Seven point seven, or we could round that up to eight percent. Latino, Hispanic to eighteen, four point one three Asian, five point seven overall for students. American, Indian, Native American, these are the census kind of buckets. Point set, point one seven to point three, two or more races, one percent to two and a half percent. This is a, a, you know, ideally, what, what, what the, what you, what you strive for is to have your staff-faculty ratio match your student ratio, right? So students can see themselves in their faculty. We've made strides in that area, I don't have historical data on that, but I have that right there. Challenges, well, ETHS has improved over time, I don't know if that's a challenge, it's not much, I mean, that's great. Significant group in each subgroup, but you know disparity, disparity, disparate outcomes based on race, right? That, that shows up in the report. Whether it's achievement, achievement reporting or discipline reporting, there's work to be done. This, this whole process has pointed out the need to be intentional in how we collect, report, and disaggregate data. I'm sure someone will be sitting here twenty years from now, looking at, well, we've reported, we think we did a great job, somebody will say, man, I really wish they collected this. One of the things that I also take note of is that state assessment systems change. One of the, so I was talking to a colleague who said, well, why don't you just go back and look at all the students who met or exceeded each year on the state testing? And so that'd be great if they talked to each other, right? Because if you go back far enough, you have students who took the eye gap, which I don't even remember what that was, it was some manufact, Illinois manufactured test for high school students that they met or exceeded. Then students took a hybrid ACT work keys, where there was some magical factoring in of meets exceeds, right? They combined these two tests. Then we had PARC for a couple of years, which was not.
Disaster.
Disaster. We're still living with that disaster, you know, down the street, I mean, they're still coming to grips with what the new assessment system's going to look like. And, you know, the Pearson-based PARC items in a different platform, so that's not good either. And now we have the SAT, which has a meets exceeds level that exceeds the college readiness benchmarks that the SAT puts out, so you could be college-ready nationally, but not meet the standard in line. So I didn't do that, but I just wanted to point out, one of the things you look at when you look at twenty, thirty years' worth of data, is that assessment systems change. So it was really nice to have the ACT, we're building out that SAT capacity, hopefully we'll stick with that for another twenty years, and then we can bridge the two data sets, because there are actual crosswalks between ACT and SAT, there are what are called concurrence tables, which is nice. And we could do that moving forward. You know, this work calls for a need for adaptive change to move the numbers, this isn't just about numbers, right? It's about, you know, all the work that went into the numbers, it's about creating a welcoming school, it's about paying attention to social, emotional learning. This is what we really need to lay out to move, to continue to move the numbers. Because numbers really are a way to measure, they're a way to measure things on a very superficial level numerically, you know, when you're talking about data. But to get to what Jude was saying earlier, and what Monique was saying, and what I was hearing, we really need to, to really listen to the kids and collect qualitative data around their experience. Whether that's survey data or things like the curriculum review process, that chemistry, world languages, two algebra, US History, and computer science are, and fine arts are going through right now. You know, where we actually have students, we do student focus groups, we do affinity focus groups, we do student-led focus groups, and then we have students collect the data and actually work with our data analysts to kind of analyze that data and then report that back. So that's actually how we, part of how we get that student voice. There's no student voice in this report, it's kind of troubling, considering we're really focused on student voice moving forward. And finally, there were very few numbers around well-being historically, which isn't a surprise. But it is something that we have wrestled with in the last two, three years, around how do we get more intentional around create, around collecting well-being data. And of course, I got to thank the board for putting well-being as a goal and elevating that goal and really being insistent on those measures, and I really appreciate that, and keep insisting. We will improve our data collection, because when somebody sits here twenty years from now and does this report, I hope they have a more comprehensive picture than I was able to present tonight.
There you go.
So Pete, put down your fire hose and step away from the table. I was just like. So, you know, as I look through this over the weekend, you know, it, it's a little frustrating, because it's disparate little pieces that are pulled from many of the reports that we see, you know, each year throughout the year. And, you know, you can, there's a data point here where, you know, that doesn't look good, and there's a, a chart where you say, well, gee, that doesn't tell me everything I need to know. And, and you can pick out a few little things like that, but the overall, when you look at this in its entirety, you get this picture of how many things are improving and going well over a long period of time. And I found that reassuring, I think is the best way to put it. And a lot of times I go home from these meetings and it's really hard to go to sleep, because you get charged up about, about one thing, you know, that isn't going well, or that you want to impact, and it's nice to take an overall long view once in a while to see kind of how we're doing overall. And I think this, this kind of conveyed to me that things are going, that we're going in the right direction. And it doesn't mean that we're done, it doesn't mean that we're going to sprain our elbows trying to pat ourselves on the back or any of that. But I think we're headed in the right direction. The other thing that really stands out is what you were just talking about at the end, is the data collection. And I think that now, compared to the early two thousands, the nineties, even all the way back to, one chart to nineteen eighty-four, we're collecting a lot more data that is a lot more meaningful, that informs our work. And that's great, I mean, that's very encouraging, so, you know. Overall, I, I, as I say, it's not, you know, we still have to look at each one of these things individually, and I know we will going forward, but as an overview, I think this was kind of, kind of nice to see.
Jonathan.
Well, I, I see that Mark and I are going to play our traditional roles to the end. There, there is a lot of good.
There's a lot in here.
A lot of good stuff in here, a lot of significant progress and positive trends under the discipline and the AP and the technology. But there is one area where the report says trends are positive for all subgroups, and we have made significant growth for each subgroup, and that's not quite correct. If you look at the ACT scores, and you look at the percentage of graduates earning an ACT composite of twenty-four or greater. Okay, and you compare twenty-eleven graduates to twenty-seventeen graduates. If you look at African-American students, in twenty-eleven, seventeen percent of them earned a, a, an ACT, an ACT composite of twenty-four or greater, seventeen percent. And in twenty-seventeen, seventeen percent of them earned a composite score of twenty-four or greater. And if you look at the Hispanic Latino students, the percentage earning a, a, a composite score of twenty-four or greater in twenty-eleven was twenty-two percent. And in twenty-seventeen, it was twenty percent. So it isn't, it isn't simply that there is a gap. It's not like, you know, everybody's getting better, but some people are getting, but we're not closing the gap. We, it, it is more fundamental than that. We have not cracked this nut. And I think it, it, it gives greater credibility to the progress that we actually have made when we don't obscure where we haven't made a whole lot of progress. And then in addition to those numbers, there's the chart that was up at one point, which showed black ACT scores median from two thousand and seven to twenty-seventeen. And I looked at this chart over the weekend.
It's the mean, yeah, yeah.
It's the, it's the one with the dotted line.
Yeah, I'm getting it.
And I, there, that one. And I said, I looked at this and I said, this does not look to me like an upward positive trend. And I know the num, that, that the dotted line is generated by Excel. So I talked to a statistician, I showed a statistician this chart, and I asked him what he had to say about it. He said, Excel's trend line is simply a best-fit line through the data points and is not showing a real trend. Even if it did show a trend, it would be that the average ACT score of black students is rising at an average rate of just point oh-four, five points per year. In perspective, that is a one-point increase in ACT score every twenty years. And if you start with the two thousand and nine data point, the trend is that the average ACT score is decreasing by approximately point four points per year, or going down by one point every two point five years. And he says the graph is visually misleading at best. And I just, I think it's so important to, to maintain our credibility. And, and, and also, we can't, we can't really grapple with a challenge unless we're willing to admit that, that it continues to be a really daunting challenge. And that we don't, you know, sugarcoat it. So I just, I just think, I would like to see us be more straightforward about what remain really daunting challenges, because that's the only way we're going to tackle them.
Can I, can I add? So I, I agree with you, Jonathan, a hundred percent, and I think when we can be more transparent and start having conversations about what the non-school factors are, as well as the school factors, those that we can control, then I think we will be able to fully address what we see as a persistent gap at this school, in this state, in this society. So it is, it is so much deeper than, you know, what we're talking about, although there are factors in school, and I'm, and I'm very appreciative of what our school is doing to be creative and innovative and to keep pushing to try to, to implement some of those strategies. But, so I'll play my role as always talking about, there are community factors that weigh into this gap.
Of course.
That as a board, we have not discussed since I've been on this board. We haven't, we haven't isolated those things. And so I think we have to also talk about that as well, and then our role in it.
I agree with you.
Both and, it's not just.
I agree with you, and I, and that's why I wasn't talking about causation, I wasn't saying what's causing this, I was thinking, simply talking about acknowledging it.
I don't know that, that I have ever felt that we have reached a point of success and we, we're there. I've never, I've never said that, I'm looking for trends. And, and yes, there are community factors, and we haven't talked about them, but there are also larger societal factors that we absolutely don't have control of. There's, there's a history here that goes back hundreds of years, hundreds of years. And to say that at ETHS, we can take a, a, a few years and we've been working like the dickens and doing some really good work, but the gap is still there, and so we're upset with ETHS because the gap is still there. And I'm not saying you said that, but I, I just think we, if, when we talk about this, we have to think bigger. We have to think huge. And we have to think, as I said earlier, that the challenges are, are persistent, they're, they're deep, and they're not going to go away just because we take beyond diversity. I mean, I wish, I wish that's all it could, it, it could be. We, and we're not the only district working on this, we're not the only organization working on this. We know, we've had folks coming in, into the school, some of the brightest people coming in, talking to us. They've been working on this as well. So this is huge, and we can't just say, oh, well, this, this data is, this doesn't mean anything, because, you know, my friend told me it, it doesn't mean. This is, this is huge, this is a lot. And, and this, we're looking for trends, and we have to continue to look for trends, upward trends. We have to recognize what we're doing, and we have to keep doing it, and stay with it, and stay with it. what we're doing and we have to keep doing it and stay with it and stay with it. That's what adaptive leadership is. It's not easy. It's, it's not, it's not a 12-step. We just, we have to stay there and stay there and be persistent and support those who are doing it and work as a team and, and make changes and tweak it and try it again. And that's, that's, that is the work.
And, and I'll remind you of just a couple of meetings ago, that 22% of the current sophomore black students in the sophomore class, 22% entered this high school proficient in reading. So, when I hear you talk about the bigger picture, it's really important to look at the total picture. It's really important to look at all the factors that we're dealing with because again, we don't control all those factors.
Right.
You are 100% right. It is a very frustrating problem. It is a very frustrating issue. But it could be that it's fewer and fewer students are entering the high school proficient in reading and we're getting still that what you call modest gain that you saw. Maybe we had a different starting point than, than other classes. So, I just want us to remember that we have to do what, what I just heard our two board members say. We have to look at the whole systemic issue and understand we do not control all those variables, but we do, and I want to leave this, this point with this, but we do try to have an impact on those variables. And that's why we talked about that we have hired an army of reading teachers that never used to exist at the high school level because we now know we have to do something about it. And that's an example of how we're, we're striving to do something about it.
I just want to read you, I was not talking about causation. I was simply talking about acknowledging the reality.
You know, any suggestion-
Can I interject here? If there's a suggestion in your comments, Jonathan, that either I or this administration or anybody at this table is unaware of the problem that you've pointed out or in any ways trying to obscure it, I want to, I want to disabuse everyone of that notion. It's absurd. There's no, no one's trying to obfuscate anything here. And, and my remarks were about the overall. And I said at the beginning, yeah, there's some things in there that aren't good. I think we all know what, what I was talking about if we just slowed down a minute. But you're trying, you know, this, this idea that maybe we're trying to hide something and not acknowledge?
I'm just reading what it says. It says the trends are positive for all subgroups. It says there's significant progress for all subgroups. And the charts don't back up-
You know, even that is nuanced, as Dr. Witherspoon just pointed out. It has to be taken in context. And, you know, it's, you know, you can, I don't know.
Jonathan, every, every time we look at data, every time we look at data, I, I see how that data falls. I see where the white students fall, achievement, discipline, every, every piece, AP, everything we just looked at tonight. And I see the bottom are the black students. And if we look at that, we know the bottom of the well, which we said, are the black male students. That's why we're doing the work. That's why this is the year of the black male students. That's why we continue to figure out other ways. What else, what else can we do? Dr. Campbell, what else can we do? We ask that question. Dr. Witherspoon, come on. Dr. Beavis, what else? Oh, let's, let's try, let's do summits. Let's, let's, let's make sure that the students can feel that they are important. Let's bring in Calvin Terrell. Let's do, let's do more. What else? What else can you come up with? You said it was going to be, what did you say? That you're big and powerful, big and different. And, and, and we were waiting on the edges of our chairs. And, and it was. And so, I, and, and we continue to challenge the administration because we're not done. So, yes, we've done a lot of work. That's the work of ETHS. ETHS isn't afraid to take it on. And when we take it on, we take it on in a big way. And so, yeah, we, we, we have these scores. We see them. We've taken it on and we, and we, we'll continue to take it on. Gretchen?
I don't have anything to add to that discussion. I think everybody made interesting points. My question is much more boring. It's just, how did we come to get this report tonight? Why, why is it in our packet? And, and I'm not suggesting, I, I'm really, let me just say first, so you don't wonder why I'm asking the question if I've got some ulterior motive here. It seems to me it's a very useful follow-up to the AP report. And it gives us sort of a, it pulls back and give us, gives us a bigger, a pie view, which I think is always a good thing. I also think it's a great thing to gather this data that gets dropped on us in lots of different formats and lots of different places at lots of different times over the year to collect it in one place. And then thirdly, I think that it would be even more useful if it formed the foundation for a district dashboard, which seriously, I've been asking about since I went to my very first school board conference almost 10 years ago, so that we could sort of communicate this more widely to everyone in our community and we could keep track of it and we could pay attention to it. I think we need to be careful about how we present it. You know, I think there are some serious issues and Jonathan has pointed out. One important thing about how we treat trend lines and there are some issues with how Excel trend lines get used. There are sort of 10 different ones you can choose. You can do rolling averages and you can do logarithmic and algorithmic versions of them. And trust me, I am no statistical expert, but, you know, I think there are ways that we can communicate very accurately and clearly this information so that we do get a kind of a regular format that we can absorb, we can look back, we can look forward, we can use it to inform our work with community groups. And I'm thinking principally of Cradle to Career, which I've been involved with for the five, now I think close to six years it's been in existence. Pete, I know you and I-
We've been, yeah.
And Eric sit on a committee that has been meeting for that long, the Prepared for Adult Life Action Team. And, you know, this kind of information is helpful to that work there as well. So, back to my question, which was, I'm, I'm not sure what prompted its inclusion in, in the report. Maybe Eric can, I see you.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind saying, I think you actually answered the question.
Maybe I did. Sorry. I didn't mean to just ramble.
As you were speaking, I thought, that's it. One of the things, and I, I certainly am a proponent of a data, data dashboard, but, but again, the limitation of it, it's often looking at a cohort in isolation and then the next year, it gives the next cohort in isolation. It has a place, so I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm embracing that. But I think this is another important thing to make it clear that we do have to step back and we do have to take a longer view. And part of the reason that we felt it's important to start doing this periodically, maybe not every year, is, is because we have to remind ourselves each cohort is different. It was spurred by the reading scores that we looked at recently, which showed the massive variations in how students are now coming to the high school and their proficiency in reading. And so, it was like, okay, we have all these different starting points and frankly, lower starting points than we've seen before. And so, one of the things was, let's step back and take a long view. So, how are we doing as these waves of students come to us?
Well, I think we should think about how, how this report or some version of this report can get used to better inform the work of the board as we have these discussions, to better inform, I think very significantly, the work that we need to do with District 65, particularly around the work of our joint literacy goal, which we've been struggling with because our systems of measurement not only don't seem to work together, but they collide in ways that are hugely unhelpful to what we're trying to do here. And I would argue in District 65 as well, but I don't sit on that board. So, and Cradle to Career. I, I think, you know, we're really grappling with some important big questions around race and these factors outside the control of the work we do at the high school that Monique and Pat have talked about. But side by side with that, we've got sort of this more mundane, sometimes tedious even, data collection piece that, and we need to put all that together in a way that's useful for all of us. And I guess that's what I would urge.
All right. Thank you for-
You're welcome. I was going to go-
That's, that's a good thing. That would be my next question for you. Oh, my goodness. Thank goodness. All right. So, do we still have a FOIA?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we just have the FOIA. Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, Dr. Beavis?
Yeah.
Do we have any comments from the public?
We have no, we have no comments from the public.
Okay. All right. So, we're at FOIA.
Yes, we've received a FOIA from Mahalik, Shepard, Hune, Pence, and Meadows and the response, the responses in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any board committee reports? I don't think we have any-
I want to do, I'm sorry I didn't send a note, but I just want to do a quick little verbal on EdRed, various EdRed items, if you don't mind. And Pat may want to chime in as well because she was at our EdRed meeting on Friday. But I first wanted to just highlight for everybody that we had a really successful EdRed annual legislative dinner last, last week or the week before, whatever week, we had really horrible weather on the Monday night. So, despite the weather, we had over 200 people in attendance at the dinner. And we had an amazing presentation by, I really want to sort of give a shout out to Dr. Colleen Chaketti, who is a doctor here and resident of Evanston. And she is also the director of the Resilience Center at Children's Memorial Hospital. And she did an outstanding PowerPoint presentation, which I shared with the administration and all of the boards. So, you should all have that. Happy to respond to any questions you may have. And then we had a really good panel, which included three or four of our elected representatives, none representing Evanston, I'm sad to say, on the panel, but other elected representatives who then engaged in a great dialogue with the audience and Dr. Chaketti around the issues of mental health in schools and what schools can do to address it. So, it was terrific. And then we are now, as you may know, gearing up for the current legislative session, which has begun in Springfield with a bang, all sorts of literally hundreds of bills being filed down there. I would editorialize here to say, not many of which address the big issues of the day, but many of which get into the minutia. And, you know, what I'm fond of saying is, if, if our legislators are so interested in all these things that are going on in our schools and trying to impose more unfunded mandates on schools, they really ought to consider running for school board and get out of Springfield. But they, they prefer to do that work from Springfield. So, I just wanted to highlight, I think all of you were getting the EdRed newsletters that go out to our board. And so, I'm not going to repeat. I just want to briefly, bear with me, I'm pulling up, EdRed is trying to focus in on some key priorities. And I'm just going to briefly highlight them for you. One, it should come as no surprise that we will oppose any, and there are some very interesting efforts to freeze property taxes. While I know this sounds appealing to property taxpayers in Evanston, including myself, virtually every one of these proposals has really dire consequences for our schools, which are principally funded through property tax revenue, particularly here in Evanston. And there are a number of very interesting legislative proposals out there around freezing property taxes. We want to be present at the table for discussions around pension reform, including attempts to shift pension costs to school districts because that would have significant repercussions for us. We're paying close attention to the implementation of the new evidence-based funding model for schools. We are also involved in addressing student discipline issues through mental health initiatives, beginning at the dinner we had a week or two ago on mental health issues in schools. Student data and cybersecurity in schools has become an issue. And I'm pleased to report that some of our technology folks here from ETHS are very much involved in our ad hoc committee on that subject. And so, we're grateful for that time. There, we're keeping an eye on the, on the physical education mandate. And EdRed's position is to have some flexibility around that mandate. We are fully in support of the removal of the Charter School Commission because we support public schools, not charter schools. And we are also monitoring closely the implementation of the Dual Credit Bill, which is a terrific bill. EdRed was very involved in the passage of that legislation last year. So, we're keeping an eye on that. Thank you for letting me get all that in. I just wanted to make sure you knew all about it. And then last week at, at the member meeting, we had a good legislative update on this and also some legislation and a presentation by a lawyer from a firm updating us on sexual assault matters, legislation and such. And Pat, I didn't know if you wanted to expand on any of that.
You did a good job. Thank you.
All right. Mark?
I thought I'd report briefly that the City School Liaison Committee met on January 24th. A lot of this stuff is more between the city and 65, but there are several areas that did intersect us. Very briefly, there was a report on safety. The new police chief was, was present and made quite an impression, quite a favorable impression, I think, on, on everybody there. There was the city made a report on sustainability and how those efforts, the difficulties they're having and how those efforts intersect with, with the schools, both school districts. The mayor's employer advisory council, a report was received on that. After school and half-day spring break activities were discussed and crossing guard transition was discussed. So, it was a brief meeting, one hour, nothing that, no policy changes or anything big came of it as far as ETHS is concerned.
Great. Thank you. Other reports? All right. So, we are at one of my favorite items, Student Board Report. Phoebe?
Okay. So, we started off the new semester with a chilly bang. We had two snow days. One snow day was expected. We were pretty sure that the Wednesday was going to be canceled. But I'm pretty sure the resounding consensus was that when it was announced that Thursday was going to be off, like, all the teachers were like, shh, because all the students got really excited and started screaming. And they wanted to finish hearing the announcement. So, that was how it started. There's good feedback about the e-school announcement. I think the decision to make it on the Friday instead of that Monday was a good decision because I know that a lot of people, like, had made plans for that and also for the long weekend. But overall, happy about not having to actually come back into school. And the seniors are really excited that the second day was at the end. So, that was nice to see. There's still a lot of confusion about, like, how exactly it's going to work, how attendance is going to work, how the class is going to work. Like, some people think that they're just going to be sitting at their computer for seven hours straight. So, that's still a little bit confusing, but information will be coming. The Black Student Summit hap, two of them happened on Tuesday and Thursday of last week, I'm pretty sure. And they, I've been hearing good feedback, other feedback that I have heard, that was fully student-planned and partly student-run. And it was the- and partly student-run, um, and it was the first so far, uh, because of Black History Month. It was, it was our, um, our Black Spirit Week. So we had the summits going then, and it was the first of the, uh, Social Consciousness Summit Series, which we've talked about a little bit tonight. So that was really exciting. Um, at the end of this week, Thursday and Friday is the SOAR Conference. So the winter conference is the second of the two, uh, conferences that the Students Organized Against Racism Club creates, organizes, and facilitates at Northwestern. Other schools from the North Shore, uh, are gonna be in attendance. I know a few students from GBS who will be there, so that's really exciting. Earlier tonight, uh, we talked about the AP stuff, and we touched on having open conversations about how it feels to be a student of color in AP classes. Um, and I think that opportunities like this SOAR Conference, um, really open up spaces for students of colors, uh, for student, students of color to have these conversations. But it also opens it up to white students who don't really have exposure to the ideas. Because they're not students of color, they're white students in these AP classes. So like, breaking out into affinity groups and like, having these types of conversations, SOAR is one of those places, that opens up those conversations, which is really good. So for this SOAR Conference, SOAR's been focusing a lot on underclassmen, um, to try to like, think ahead and think about what type of leaderships and what types of leaders that we're trying to foster, um, throughout the four years at ETHS. So I'm really excited for that. Outside of SOAR and in student union, uh, we've started to take a look at the tardy and detention policy. And at first, we were just looking at the tardy policy, um, and really specifically trying to see how we can just lower the overall number of detentions. But then we kind of realized that it, it makes more sense to take on the tardy policy and the way that those detentions are being, um, given at the same time. And basically, what we've noticed is that right now ETHS kind of just has like, a negative punishment system. So if you get one tardy, you get one detention, and then once you get ten, it's just another negative punishment put on you, that you get social probation. So what we're trying to do is, at some point, put in some positive intervention. And what that, the most plausible, um, solution to that would be to institute some sort of restorative justice program. And what that restorative justice program might be is still up for debate, but I think that, and student union believes that it makes sense to, instead of just keep pushing negative punishment, that at some point, there's some sort of positive intervention that's educating and engaging students, rather than just continuously like, sending a message of putting them down and just, um, just put something in there that's positive. So at the last update, I talked a little bit about what, um, I've been working on with other ETHS students outside of ETHS and those kind of efforts. So I talked briefly about a North Shore Coalition, uh, between different schools around the North Shore. We reached out to Highland Park, uh, GBS, GBN, both of the, the Niles, um, the different main schools, and also, uh, Nutria. And so we had the name, the North Shore Association of Student Activists, with the acronym NASA, that I was super excited about. So it was an idea that Molly Hartenstein and Leona Wallace and I created over winter break. And yesterday, on Sunday, we had our first meeting, so there were about seven or eight students who came, um, from other schools, which was really exciting. And that's, they were mostly SOAR students from GBS, so that was how. I met some of them and we talked about this SOAR Conference, which was really good. We all had different ideas for the coalition, but overall, we kind of just decided that at the end of the year, we're gonna throw a kickoff event, kind of similar to the event that was held here in October, just kind of like showcasing student activism art, like whether that goes from like, dance to painting to spoken word. So we really wanna do that, and at the end of the meeting, we discussed the coalition name, and we agreed that the acronym NASA can stay, so. I'm a nerd, so that was really exciting for me. All around, good things are to come for second semester, so I'm really looking forward to it. Yes, iteration. Also prom, prom is being talked about, so. We're, we're getting excited for that. Um, but yeah, it's exciting.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. Alright, Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, thanks for the mention of prom, Phoebe. I'm, I'm starting to get hopes of spring.
No kidding.
I, I have, uh, several things here. I wanna just reiterate what Phoebe said, that, uh, we're going to do, uh, on Friday, the twenty-second, an e-learning day, as a way to make up one of our, uh, missed days due to the weather. And, uh, we've just got a ton of staff involved in that. And, uh, we certainly hope with the planning that we've made, that students will soon get a much better idea about how that's going to work and, and, and more information from each of their classes. I will already go on record to say, it will be not be necessary to sit at the computer for seven straight hours. We're, we're definitely trying to, to limit that and, and make it much more workable, so, good point. But we have had to move then, uh, the last day of school, till Monday, June tenth, uh, in order to get in our other makeup day. The seniors are just perfectly happy with that, and, uh, and, and so we've made some changes in the schedule that have been publicized. Huge congratulations to Cory Winchester. Cory, uh, is one of our history teachers. I think pretty much everybody in Evanston knows Cory Winchester. But, uh, but we are just so excited that he is one of the thirty-two finalists for the twenty-nineteen Golden Apple Awards for Excellence in Teaching. By the way, you're sitting at the table with a Golden Apple winner, Dr. Campbell. Now in his earlier days, uh, earned that rare and, uh, and impressive distinction. And, um, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, uh, that, uh, that Cory will be selected as a finalist, uh, for that. And you, and you never know, we don't even know, basically, until the day of, when a team with cameras and everything shows up and, and wants to go into his classroom. So it's, it's a very exciting, uh, experience, uh, if and when, uh, it, it occurs. I wanna point out that, uh, yes, we're, uh, uh, already trying to get transitioned in the class of twenty-twenty-three. We've had some activities already with them, we've had, uh, car selection night and the like. But, uh, we will be having an, uh, upcoming Sports and Activities Fair, which we've been doing now, uh, for a few years. It's gonna be on Wednesday, uh, from February thirteenth, that's tomorrow, uh, day after tomorrow. And, uh, it begins at six-thirty PM, and we encourage all families, as well as students in that incoming class, to come. What we have found, at least, uh, like, in last year, for example, uh, we do get a big turnout, so we're very excited about that. Uh, the Winter Play, uh, it's already that time, that's this week too. That starts, uh, the fourteenth through the sixteenth in the upstairs theater. And, uh, the, uh, production this year is the Colored Museum. The ETHS Dance Company Performance, it's gonna be on February the twenty-eighth. That's at four PM in the auditorium, uh, and it features both professional as well as our student dance pieces. We also, um, wanna remind our ETHS seniors that, um, ETHS scholarship applications are going to open on February nineteenth. That's just around the corner. There are many, 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 many scholarship opportunities offered right here through ETHS, uh, and all our affiliate, uh, uh, organizations. And seniors, take a look at that and get, uh, some applications in. Finally, just a couple of reminders, um, we are involved, uh, at this point, have been, uh, in, involved now since December in the Illinois Five Essential Survey. Uh, that is still open, but it closes this Friday. It's a ten-minute survey. You can access it on the ETHS website, and students, parents, and teachers are encouraged to participate. I wanna put a special shout-out to parents. Uh, we're go- we're gonna have a huge, uh, student response, because we structured the school day to make sure we get a huge student response. We're also doing very well on our teacher response, uh, but, uh, the parent response, uh, is really important. And finally, um, and, uh, you, you know, this is, uh, uh, always one that all the students enjoy being reminded of. Uh, Monday, February eighteenth is President's Day, and there will be no school that day. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Alright, so we are at our, we're, uh, committee of the Finance Committee, and, uh, Mary is moving to the table.
And Kendra.
And Kendra, also, welcome Kendra. Alright.
And Mary, we always save the best slot for you.
Yeah, we do.
No, no, I wanna remind you, some of us can remember the days of drive-in theaters, and they would, they would show all the shorts, and then they would show a movie, and then they would show, uh, cartoons, and then the big feature would start at about eleven o'clock at night. So just think of it as a drive-in movie, and we're up to the big feature.
So good evening, everyone. Here we are for the big feature, that we hope to keep brief. So I hope that you're geared up.
Just a quick reminder, this is Kendra Williams, our Assistant CFO, and, um, she's been in the role since July first. So this, I think she was here one other time in the fall, and so she'll be coming in to assist when we have exciting, riveting, main event features to brief you on. So Kendra's gonna start our information tonight.
Alright, so we're just gonna be doing the mid-year budget review, and it's gonna be for, uh, this fiscal year FY nineteen. And so the information that we're gonna go over tonight is gonna be covering, uh, from July first to December thirty-first. So although that's the middle of our fiscal year, it's not quite the middle of our school year. So you'll find, um, as we go through the revenues and expenditures by fund, that, uh, a lot of it hovers around the forty-five percent mark, which is, um, expected. And we'll go through and kind of talk about the per, um, percentages that are, are far off from that. And so, uh, we'll do that analysis by fund, then we'll move into some budget concerns, just, um, with the state of things right now. And then we'll take, uh, questions, if you guys have any.
And we also have fifty-two slides like Dr. Beavis.
Hope you're ready. No, just joking. Definitely do not have fifty-two slides.
There's no competition here, you know?
It just hit the topic mark.
So, um, starting off with our largest fund, the Education Fund, for revenues, we are, um, we're at forty-six point seventeen percent as of December thirty-first. And so this is very close to where we were in fiscal year eighteen, when we were at forty-seven point one percent. So there's just a small lag of, um, really less than one percent, uh, when it comes to revenues. And then as far as expenditures, we were at forty-five point six-eight percent as of December thirty-first. And so we are seeing, um, that there is some lag in some of the federal reven- um, um, sorry, in some of the federal revenues, which might explain that one percent, and then we're still within the realm of expectations for expenditures right now. Uh, for the TORT Fund, we were at forty-six point three-four percent for revenue, and, uh, for the expenditures at a hundred percent. So as you can see, that's way off from that forty-five marker that I mentioned before, and that's because in the beginning of the year, we use all the funds that are budgeted for the TORT Fund to pay for our insurance premiums. So pretty much, we've already covered our expenditures for the year, and we won't see anything else until FY twenty. For operations and maintenance, um, revenues were at forty-four point three percent, and, uh, expenditures at forty-six point four-eight percent. And so, uh, when it comes to the expenditures, that's well below last year's pace, because last year, there was a large transfer to capital that went into expenditures, so that was, uh, in, in sixty-five point, sixty-eight point four-five percent last year, so significantly below, just because we haven't had that large transfer. For bond and interest, um, we were at forty-one point nine-five percent for the, uh, revenues, and for expenditures, we were at sixty-seven point two-eight percent. And that is, um, so high, because we have large debt payments that happen in December. And so really, the bulk of the, um, expenditures that would be happening for the bond and interest fund happened in December, and then we'll still have a few more payments in May, uh, which would cover the rest of the expenditures for the year. For the Transportation Fund, forty-three point four percent, uh, for revenue, revenues. And, um, I had mentioned some slower, um, federal payments, but we also had some slower state payments in this, uh, category, in this fund, which is, so we are a little bit behind when it comes to revenue, uh, from last, uh, last year. And as far as expenditures, we're at thirty-eight point four-four percent, and that's just ahead of last year's pace. However, um, the expenditure budget was less this year. And so we have seen some reductions in expense when it, it comes to special ed transportation, which led to a smaller budget. So the number looks like, if you were to compare it to FY eighteen, like, oh, maybe we're spending a little bit more percentage-wise, but it, there's a smaller budget there, so that's just a factor to take into consideration, if you were comparing the data from this year to last year. And then for the IMRF Fund, um, revenues were, uh, close to forty-five, close forty-five percent, at forty-four point eight-nine. And then for expenditures, we were at forty-seven point three-six. And so the expenditures are just slightly ahead of last year, but still within the realm of what's expected at this point. So capital improvement, you wanna?
Oh, you can go ahead if you want.
Okay, so for the Capital Improvement, um, Fund, it's set up a little bit differently, which is why, uh, we decided not to set it up in a pie graph, because it just wouldn't tell a good, it would be hard to discern the data that way. And so, um, just as talking points, the revenues, um, that we have for the Capital Improvement Fund are what we've gotten from the foundation. Pete gave them a great shout-out earlier about all the great work that they do in, um, supplying us with revenue, so that we can get these amazing projects going throughout the building. And so, um, that's what's been received in that fund thus far. And then also, we did receive, um, proceeds from the sale of the Geometry and Construction Home. However, it was not received until January, so it wasn't included in the data for, um, that was provided. And then expenditures are on target, um, with the, the budgeted projects that we had, and we're just really finishing up the summer twenty-eighteen projects, um, at this point.
And I just wanna remind everyone that, uh, we typically issue bonds every two years. So that's why this particular fund doesn't really work well in a pie chart, because we don't have, um, you know, matching revenues this year, because we do a two-year bond issuance, so that's why we didn't really show you that. But, um, you know, the projects are on track for what the board approved, uh, a year ago. And, um, I think in the near future, you're probably gonna see some of those projects, uh, at work, if you haven't already. A lot of you have seen Entrance Three, uh, but I think you're gonna visit the Kempfis Labs and some of the other smaller projects, so that's coming, so. Okay, so just a few other points that we wanted to make. State payments aren't terri- we've certainly seen them worse. They're not terribly slow. But it's funny, because some things are lagging, like, um, larger, a larger payment that we normally receive for the Transportation Fund, have not received that yet. But I'm not sure, I wasn't aware of this until about a week ago. I'm not sure if you're aware that the act, the federal, uh, government shutdown has actually delayed our, uh, school lunch, breakfast lunch, and after-school meal payments, to the tune of about fifty thousand dollars a month. Now, there was a reprieve on the shutdown, so you would think the money might flow, because money was flowing, but not our money, not that kind of money. So, uh, because it was a, um, a short reprieve that still isn't resolved yet, the money ISB issued some bulletins and had some conference calls and let districts know that, um, only those districts in what is now considered a lower tier in the evidence-based funding will receive their money. And we're in what's labeled as Tier Four, meaning, uh, we're heavily dependent on our own property taxes, so we don't get as much, uh, state revenue. The state informed us that they, as the pass-through agency for these federal revenues, would not be sending money to Tier Four districts until the federal shutdown's resolved. So, um, you know, thankfully, we're not relying heavily on that money. We're certainly gonna continue to feed students. But, you know, over, over time, as people talk about the need for districts to have reserves, crazy things happen that you have to be able to rely on your reserves, or you have to go borrow money. So this is a, a small portion of it, but Kendra and I were talking today, and what we don't know yet, i- if this, um, if the government shutdown does persist for a little while, there are larger quarterly revenues that we get from the federal government, and those could be affected as well. And those are more like special education revenues, the, um, room and board, and, um, you know, special ed, uh, private, uh, day school tuitions, and, and those are big-ticket items. So we'll see. Um, the good news is, the district will be okay. But certainly, um, it's the kind of thing that you have to plan for, even though you don't know that it might come up, so. Just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, in case you hadn't heard. Couple other points to bring up, I'm not sure if you've heard this, but the current CPI, which comes out every December. There are lots of different CPI measures, but this one is the one that is used to determine how much the property tax levies can increase. So that number is one point nine percent, which is actually lower than it's been the last couple of years. We had two years of two point one, but certainly higher than it was in the years right before that. We had a point seven, a point eight. They tend to average about one point five over a ten, ten-year or so average. I think Gretchen, you, you touched on some things that Ed Redd has mentioned, which is property tax freeze. I kind of thought that that might be out of the picture, but I don't think it is. So I feel like we're broken records here, talking about property tax freezes and pension shifts. But the truth is, no one has said that those things will be out of the picture. So they're always looming. But one point nine percent is not terrible overall. But it certainly i- is a little bit lower than the last couple of years. We know that we have a new governor. We don't know, you know, exactly what the new agenda will be. We hope there'll be a balanced budget in, in the summer. But I, I think I was just hearing, I just read an article about how the governor is reminding us all that he's kind of inherited some, some messes. So we'll see what happens in the summer. So our contingency planning for now is really just refining projections. And, and I like the mid-year budget review process, because it really does cause us to take a look at line items that we don't always look at, because we're not an organization that does monthly financials like a corporation might. So we checked in everything in December. There were no surprises, kind of boring from, it's kind of the same thing we tell you every year. But it's a nice time to stop and just make sure everything's on track. Sectioning process starts soon. Marcus and I were just talking about increased enrollments again. And as graduating classes leave with less kids than the incoming classes include, that, you know, has contributed to increasing our enrollment, as Pete touched on earlier as well. So those kinds of things are always in the back of our minds and then we have to be prepared to help with that process, whatever it means. So I think that's it. Any questions?
Great.
I, I'd just like to reiterate that this is why it's so important that we have cash reserves. State revenue lags, federal revenue lags. We only get property tax collections twice a year on reassessment years. It seems to always be more complicated. And when that happens, even our payments on property tax lag. And literally, if we did not have cash reserves, we would be at the point at different times, we couldn't make payroll.
And yet, I will point out that one of the bills that's been filed in Springfield would penalize school districts
I know.
with reserves over a certain dollar amount by freezing their property taxes.
It's unbelievable.
And without really any, any clear understanding of the implications and the real-world issues that lead to the need for those reserves. So this is definitely something that hasn't gone away and it's still gonna be a topic for discussion.
Thankfully, we're right on that border. But at the Ed Redd meeting, there were a lot of people who brought up points of, a lot of districts do have reserves, but then they have large capital needs that come up and aging buildings and things that they can't anticipate and leaks. And, you know, so people, worst case, I think, will start to be more aware of not letting those funds pile up in the education fund and trying to use them. But I also brought up the point at that meeting that it, it wasn't that long ago. I mean, it's been in the last eight to ten years that Cook County property tax bills weren't due until, I think, December. And we literally had to plot out how long we could live on our fund balance and we had to live on that fund balance. We would have run out of money in January.
Yeah, we barely made it without borrowing.
Right. And we were in the process of working with District sixty-five to kind of line up some joint short, short-term borrowing. But, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to place a limitation of fifty percent in, in reserves, which makes it sound like districts are sitting on piles of money. But even at our healthy reserve level, we were one month away from not having money to meet payroll and pay bills. So.
Wow. Stunning. Yeah.
Well, we're good.
But the good news is we're paying our bills. And when you see the reminder that Kendra said, you know, we spend a lot of money upfront, the way a school year is structured, knowing, and, 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 you know, there are pros at what percentage is a good percentage based on when, when we get our other collections. And so that is not uncommon at all. But if we didn't have the reserves, we, I, I, it'd be impossible.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, so moving to our action items. The first action item is Women in History Month resolution, and I believe Pat Monsala's gonna read that for us.
National Women's History Alliance theme for twenty nineteen is visionary women, champions of peace and nonviolence. The theme for ni- for twenty nineteen is visionary women, champions of peace and nonviolence. This year, we honor women who have led efforts to end war, violence, and injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. These honorees embrace the fact that the means determine the ends and so develop nonviolent methods to ensure just and peaceful results. For generations, women have resolved conflicts in their homes, schools, and communities. They have rejected violence as counterproductive and stressed the need to restore respect, establish justice, and reduce the causes of conflict as the surest way to peace. From legal defense and public education to direct action and civil disobedience, women have expanded the American tradition of using inclusive, democratic, and active means to reduce violence, achieve peace, and promote the common good. From women's rights and racial justice to disarmament and gun control, the drive for nonviolent change has been championed by visionary women. These women consciously built supportive, nonviolent alternatives and loving communities, as well as advocating change. They have given voice to the underrepresented and hope to victims of violence and those who dream of a peaceful world. During Women's History Month, we recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, grandmothers, aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. The President of the United States has proclaimed March twenty nineteen as Women's History Month to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplishments, and contributions of American women. Therefore, we, the District Two-O-Two School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty nineteen as Women's History Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Pat, for reading that. The next item is release for public information minutes of closed sessions from July two thousand eighteen to December two thousand eighteen and the destruction of closed session tapes. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next, we are at the consent agenda, which consists of approval of intergovernmental agreement for use of body-worn camber, cameras by police on school district property, approval of capital improvement program revisions, approval of minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, closed session meeting, January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting, January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting, and February sixth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting. Approval of bills, personnel agenda, which includes appointments to staff exempt, certified and support staff, change in status, educational overload and stipend, leaves of absence maternity, which certified, retirement, food service, release, safety. And we have an addendum, which includes appointment to staff, safety, and change in status stipends.
Pat, can we separate out the intergovernmental agreement from the rest of the consent agenda?
You wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I wanna talk about it.
Okay. Yes. Okay. So could we have a motion to approve all of the consent agenda except the approval of intergovernment agreement for use of body-worn cameras by police on school district property?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right.
We should put a motion.
Yeah, we should put a motion. Can we have a motion to approve intergovernmental agreement for use of body-worn cameras by police on school district property?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I have some, I just had some questions about this. It's not clear to me when an SRO can record and when they can't and what kind of oversight there is in how that discretion is exercised. So it says, "An SRO's BWC shall not record during the school day unless and until the SRO has reason to believe that a crime has been or is in the process of being committed." Okay. And then the next sentence says, "In the event an SRO is in a hostile situation or perceives that a complaint will be raised, in the SRO's discretion, the BWC can begin recording." And I don't know if the second sentence modifies the first. In other words, there always has to be a crime. But in addition, but, or could there be a hos- could the SRO perceive a hostile situation that was not a crime? Like the previous sentence. It's just not, it's not clear to me when they can record and what, how, what kind of monitoring or how kind of oversight there is to see how that discretion is used.
Actually, as you know, there's now a state law that, that the police must wear a body camera. And so our attorney and the city attorney worked with both District sixty-five, ETHS, and the city, all in concert to work out the details. The police are receiving training, so they will have themselves better training about when they might perceive a hostile situation. That really won't be something that we will determine. And in fact, you know, it's like a button that they hit for, for that camera to go on. And it wouldn't be like they would, you know, ask our permission. "Oh, by the way, I got this going on at the back, back parking lot, you know, can I turn it on?" So it's really gonna rely more on police training, on, on how, how, how they utilize the camera.
So will, do we have any, I mean, do we have any choice in this at all? I mean, in other words, if they, if they have to, if they're, if they're on duty.
They, by this new state law, have to record and then they happen to be on duty at ETHS, they don't even need our permission to, to do that, right?
Well, yes and no. What we tried to do is to state the kind of, exactly what you read. So that it, for example, let's say that, that the, and, and this happens often, the SRO is in the dean's office. There's an event, they've been asked to come in, to work through the situation with the student, to learn more about it. There's nothing in there that would, would allow them to turn that on. What we're trying to do, or let's say they're in with a social worker. That's not one of the cases in which they're allowed to turn it on. So what it was trying to do is say, you just don't routinely have the camera on. These are the kind of circumstances under which you would turn it on. And now they'll have to have training about when you perceive a hostile environment and the like. But what it does eliminate is we don't have to say, you know, when you're just talking to a social worker, when you're talking with the dean, when you're interacting with a student, is that, or the superintendent even. Is that camera on? Because the fact is, this, this does not, does not permit that. This, this only has those certain circumstances.
But in that situation, what if it turns hostile?
Well, yeah, they make that, right. If they make that judgment, they, they, they hit. And, and by the way, yes, we have had cases, like in a dean's office, where the situation does turn hostile. And, and, and they would have to, you know, make that judgment at that point.
Well, Eric, and it says reasonably believes that there is imminent danger to students. So employees, the police official, and third parties. So I think they receive the training, as they would any officer, to determine what that imminent danger is. But it also states that the parties recognize that ETHS has authority over educational environments and that disciplining students for violations of a student code is appropriate for school officials to manage. So there is a difference between.
Where's the imminent danger part?
Under C four. They will first use restorative action. That's the last sentence, as an alternative. And then it speaks to imminent danger, so, which I think is different than a hostile environment.
The other thing that.
So I just want to be clear about that. Imminent danger is what they're trained in.
That's police.
All the time, a hostile environment could be an argument, and I think they would know the difference. So that's what I'm hoping.
Well, and there's a, in there, it says that every time they use it, they have to report to the principal, which doesn't on the front end address your concern. But if there's problems, then we can start to identify that and then hopefully make corrective action that they're not handling it properly. That was one of the things I liked about the safeguard.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing I didn't see is if students can say, "Can you please turn your body camera on?"
And I don't think that's an option.
Right. I know. It would be my option, but, you know, I'm just saying.
And in fact, I don't think that's our option either.
No.
That is the point. That is a police decision.
That is a police decision.
Well, the other question I had about it is that it's, it's a five-year agreement. And since this is brand-new and experimental, wouldn't we want to see how it worked for a year? And then rather than locking ourselves in for five years, I.
That's a good question. We were, we were fine with it. I, I, I mean, I, I, you, you'll have to think about that here. We were fine with it and it will save legal costs by having to go back and revisit it every year, because we felt like we had the restrictions that, that we could possibly ask for. And, and in fact, for example, you have to report to the principal and, and as Monique or somebody just said. So if we see a pattern, we can take it up with the city, with the chief, and say, hey, you know what? This just seems totally inappropriate. There are some other restrictions about how, how, what the body camera records can be used to. You know, it, it, it's not like, like it automatically is, is released, you know, into the public sector or anything like that.
And it is a school setting, so.
And it is a school, and it is a school setting. And so there are, obviously, as you know, there are other laws about right to privacy.
Yeah.
Right, 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 not to have your image.
Right.
You, you know, what, published, if you agree. Now, again, if it's a police matter, that, or a crime, you know, that obviously is gonna, gonna supersede, but, but it wouldn't.
Do we know if it would be voidable?
I, you know, I don't know that answer and, and I'm sure that that's a police answer, because imagine the amount of body camera over time, that, you know, and then they have the dashboard cameras. You know, I, I, I'm thinking, they must have to deal with that a lot of times. And, and I, and I'll be honest, I don't personally know that answer.
There's also some remedies if they breach. You know, there's in the Roman numeral four B, substitute breach of the terms and conditions of the agreement, there's some rights that we have there. And that would be, I guess, calling into question interpretation of the use. Does that comply, right? And if we were, thought we were aggrieved, as it were, we would have that remedy. I don't know.
It, it, it is something we're not used to.
Yeah. This is very different for us.
Perfectly honest, you know.
Do we know when the other entities will be?
Do we know when the other entities will be adopting, when it's on the agenda?
Well, I I don't know for a fact, but I know District Sixty-Five's meeting tonight, so I I I believe, based on the timing, uh, that that it actually, is the city meeting tonight? It it may be on all three agendas. I don't know about that.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I do know District Sixty-Five and the school districts were trying to adopt, so I'm I'm thinking that they are are adopting.
You know, the whole thing struck me is, it just struck me that there's probably gonna be a lot of opportunities where things, self-optimal outcomes, let's call them, for both sides, for students, for police, you know, and-
Oh, yeah.
It it's just, it doesn't feel great, but on the other hand, state law is state law, and we gotta do what we gotta do, I guess.
Right. And I wouldn't be surprised if this is modified or changed, and I would really be surprised if states were five years.
Helped us, let me explain. By law, they have them.
Yeah.
And by law, the police are making decisions all the time whether to use or not. We we felt that having the agreement gave us a little more control, a little more opportunity to 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 kinda have input in.
That was one question I had. Do the police even need this agreement to wear them and use them as their C five?
I doubt it. That's what I mean. I I, because if you are a a uniform policeman, you have to have it on. So so that's the part we thought. We we actually thought that it that it benefited us to have some level of agreement.
Well, yeah, because because we are, because of our school-
Yeah.
-the way it is.
-and the protection of privacy for students.
Right.
So.
Well, and making a conversation a part of it, you know, reporting to the principal, I think raises that opportunity to say, "Whoa, you're you're overusing this, or you're using it wrong." Whereas, as Eric said, if they just wore them and came in, we have noth- I mean, if that's what the state law says, we don't have much control. This seems to give a little more of a conversation.
Yeah, and we've been at this for a while, trying to work out through all of these questions and unintended consequences, and so this is the best, you know, version that I think Eric and I had seen since August or so, so we, you know, we would bring it tonight.
The city's been talking about this. I mean, this is what they, yeah, this is part of them pushing the reform that they're trying to address.
Oh, and you know what? I gotta backtrack. I think they're having a work session tonight, so I am not sure that they're, they're taking
I don't think they have a board meeting.
Yeah.
No, I I I'm sorry. I correct my, they have a meeting tonight, but but I don't think it's a-
Well, I mean, we could always move it to our next meeting, I, if we're, feel like we need more questions answered, or I I I'm-
Well, right now, we have a motion on the table.
Sure.
So we need to to, unless there's more discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 Ball?
No.
Wade?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. All right. Next item is old business and new business. Does anybody have any old or new business? If not, um, anybody want to make a statement for the polling of the board? Otherwise, how do I do this? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
All right, please. We are adjourned.